One. Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular count the Midland Council meeting for Wednesday, September first, two thousand and twenty one. This meeting is being held virtually, you can see it on YouTube or real on Rogers Cable fifty three. Counselor McGinn will be late, but she will be here this evening. I'd like to start by just acknowledging. The indigenous. Land acknowledgement. It was as follows, the town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land within which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation. Rama First Nation and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre confederation treaty. Five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams treaties nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the here on Wendat. And the historic homelands of the Maitee and that our town is home to a large and diverse community. Indigenous. With that, I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection. So some of the folks who've been left behind in Afghanistan and the turmoil that's going on there and elsewhere around the world. Thank you very much. I'll ask now if there are any declarations of conflict of interest around tonight's proceedings. Not seeing none. I have a motion for the approval of the agenda by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor Prost. That this contents of the regular council agenda for September first, two thousand and twenty one be approved. Any comments or questions around tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that carries. Next, I believe we have the consent agenda. Which would be moved by. Counselor Cunningham. And seconded by Counselor Maine. That the items related recommendations contained within a September first, two thousand and twenty one consent agenda. As consent items have been considered by council and be adopted with the exception of item five point four point one CSR dash two zero two one dash five five. Municipal Comprehensive Review MCR Status and Lands Needs Assessment. Which will be withdrawn under. Which will we rather be considered under section ten. Reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for councils consideration. Comments or questions around the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, I've seen none opposed, thank you, that carries. There's no correspondence for consideration. Sorry. Next, I have a motion to suspend counsel in the committee of the whole. So moved by Counselor Downer, seconded by Counselor Gordon, that counsel resolve in the committee of the whole. Comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that carries unanimously, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, your worship, welcome everyone this evening. We have no presentation, but we do have two deputations, one being Mr. Kittle Luvette. To do a presentation with regards to community safety and accessibility concerns for pedestrians. This traffic along Midland Rotary Multi Use Trail through Bayport Village. Is Mr. Luvette with us today?
No, I'm unmuted, yes I am.
How are you? Good to see you.
Very well, thank you.
How's that drone doing? I love the pictures.
Oh, it's doing well.
Fantastic, well, thank you so much for coming this evening and. I'll remind you that you have ten minutes, do your presentation, I will give you a warning when we get with two minutes remaining, if that's fine. And please stick around, we may have a few questions for you after.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much, sir, it's all yours.
Okay, so thank you very much for your time this evening, I really do appreciate that. I know that just looking at the agenda, you've got a lot of, lot of similar items grouped together today, so. Very happy to be the first. So today I'd like to talk about the waterfront trail going through Bayport Village and really. The concerns that a lot of the neighbors share on the way it's used and the traffic. And also like to talk about the winter use of the trail. So we can have the next slide, please. So the Bayport Village, I know you're, you're all very well aware of it, it's a growing community, we're up to about a hundred permanent homes here now and growing steadily. With the stage two development in process, be adding about another hundred and fifty homes. Now, because of all this construction, I know we talked about this two years ago in the stage two public hearing. A lot of the sidewalks are closed or inaccessible, various portions, different times of the year. And that makes it rather dangerous for people, a lot of people actually have to walk on the sidewalk. Sorry, on the street and the winter particularly is very bad. And Counselor Cunningham, actually during. The closed session afterwards, I saw it in the recording, you, I had to put your quote here, it's, it's actually excellent. That you walked there and you found it dangerous and you wouldn't do it again, and I think that's really telling that we have a problem. So, next slide please. So, really, it's a great trail, it's a very beautiful scenic area to walk on. We have a lot of neighbors walking through there, we have a lot of people from the neighborhood communities walking through, riding through. People driving to the neighborhood to have a walk, it's, it's just a great multi use trail and it's used well. And it's very busy, particularly in the summer with all the traffic from Marina, I mean, that's a lot of people come there for the weekends. And next slide please. So I've just got a few slides here, sort of breaking down the layout of the trail. Don't necessarily need to look at them in detail now, it's just when I reference a couple of points later on, we can always go back and look at them, or you can at your leisure. Because it's in the, it's in the pack, so if we, next slide please. And, yeah, just again, we can go through, next slide. Now, this one's interesting, the trail stands right through to, to Golly Park. And the only sign we have about rules on the trail is that Golly Park entrance. And it's your typical trail and the same part of the multiple, the multi use trail. The same as going right through Pete Pedersen Park and through to Tiffin as well, same signs used. So the really key points here, the speed limit of twenty kilometers an hour. The no motorized vehicles, unfortunately, it's very vague with them motorized vehicles. It says unless snowmobiles are permitted, but nowhere does it say snowmobiles are not permitted. However, this is not part of the trail system that is actually leased to the Georgian based snow riders. So we do see snowmobiles coming through the trail a lot and. Sorry, pause here, if we go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so during, so as a comparison trail, we've got the waterfront trail through Tiffin, it's a very similar trail. The only difference there we have is we have a sidewalk as well, that's, that's well used, but not as well, it's not as accessible because of construction. So we did notice that the Tiffin Trail is now being plowed, a single pass through sidewalk plow. And that's obviously a great, great function for the neighborhood, we see well used, a lot of people walking there. And what myself and some of our neighbors did this past year is we actually got out there with our own snow blowers and we cleared a path, sort of two widths of a, a home snowblower. All the way through the trail. And the number of people complimenting, thanking us was tremendous. The next slide please. So these snowmobiles, they will go fast every time, any time of the day or night. And it's particularly concerning in the evenings where they have no way of seeing pedestrians on the trail. So the past about five years, I've been in contact with the bylaw enforcement and we've managed to get some barricades put up. The first few years, they put up snow cones with a bit of snow, sorry, traffic cones with a bit of snow fence and the snowmobiles just moved them. This year, we actually got wooden barriers and they were a lot more effective. But we also have a lot of other use of motorized vehicles, so we've got the, the e-bikes or e-scooters, we've got these little four wheeled things, I'm not quite sure what you call them. But see them on the roads around the town as well as on the trail. And of course, we get people coming to park in the parks to go fishing. So these are things that really don't belong on the trail, they make it hazardous for pedestrians and for, for regular cyclists. So, yeah, next slide please. So really, the concern we have, this is a lot of words on here, so I'm not going to read it, you can all read for yourselves. So some of the traffic really doesn't belong in the same place as pedestrians. And that's where we get to the, the heavy vehicles, the, the fast vehicles. And some of these e-bikes, just a regular bicycle, power assisted bicycle, you see the kids whipping through without pedaling and they're going. I don't think they realize how fast they're going, to be honest. Because they're just talking to each other and whizzing by. So we have mentioned the snowmobiles, we've got the e-bikes, mobility scooters, those, the, the regular ones from. That are truly mobility devices that sort of take people walking speed and so on, those are welcome, never a concern. Most of the cyclists are not a concern, they're considerate, they warn you either with a bell or coming up on your left, that type of thing, it's, it's welcome. But we do get the odd ones who treat this as a roadway and those are the real ones that are a concern. So if my, my opinion and if they're going to treat it as roadway and go that sort of speed, they belong on the road. They don't belong on a, on multi use trail, the trail is there for the enjoyment of the people and. Commuting at high speed head down is not really enjoyment. So we have, yeah, we have a variety of, of concerns there and then with the, a lot of the traffic on the pedestrian traffic is actually. A lot of elderly people from the, the neighborhood. A lot of our residents in the neighborhood are getting elderly and this is their retirement residence. Or their summer residence because of snowbirds. And whether out with walkers or strollers, when you have a few young families. And to see these cyclists and powered vehicles going through at high speed, it's, it's frightening. And I think my, the next presentation from Tiffin Group will be, is mentioning several of the same concerns. Okay, the next slide please. So I mentioned before being working with the, contacting by law enforcement and this one was actually the best. The best barricade we've had yet. We actually were able to walk around the end of it and, well, you can see my clear path in the middle. So this effectively stopped the snowmobiles and that was a, that was a great benefit, made it feel a lot safer and we had people walking all the time. One of the problems we had though is me with my snow blower and the neighbors with their snow blowers, we couldn't do anything effectively for ice clearing. So we did get a bit of slipperiness there. And to be honest, it's a lot of work, after every substantial snowfall, I'd be out there two or three hours working on that. So appreciated by the neighborhoods, even when it got icy, they still appreciate it, but I really think that. It would be good if we can have this being the clearing being done by the council.
Two minutes, sir.
Okay, so good timing, because the next slide is the important one, so if we can. So what I would like is. To ask is we clearly do signposting for what's allowed on the trail and what sort of speed limits. And again, we've got a great social media team, so if we can publish that through the Twitter and so on. And that applies really to not just the Bayport Trail, it's really any trail, we need to let people know what the rules are. Because if you don't know the rules, you'll never follow. And in the winter, really would like the, to see the snow clearing and salting sanding taking place on the, the main thoroughfare. And to be honest, I know that any of this work costs money and it may not be budgeted, but some type of movable barrier, like I showed them this little. Small picture there from the rail trail in Penetek. If you have something like that up in the winter, it'll stop the snowmobiles. I'd hate to see it up in the summer because frankly, they're an eyesore, but they are hinged and they can be put aside. Out of the way, so then the normal maintenance vehicles can go through. Anyway, so that's what I'm asking and then if we have the next slide. The sort of the reality check is I know the stuff can't effectively be enforced. I mean, we can try enforcing, we can have people standing out there day and night, but you're not, you're only going to catch the odd few and really. We should be enjoying the trail, doing what we can to enjoy. So really voluntary compliance is what I'm, I'm hoping for. From most people and then if we have all the signposts, I'm quite happy to tell somebody, please slow down. And so instead of where's it written, I can say here it's written. So I think my time's just about up, so my next slide just has a list of names of the people I consulted on this all in the neighborhood. So I didn't necessarily get feedback from them, but they all had an opportunity for feedback. So that's my time, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming to council and doing the presentation, I wonder if there's any council members that had any questions. To regard to this presentation, I see Counselor Gordon and Counselor Cunningham, I'll start with Counselor Cunningham, then I'll move to Counselor Gordon.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you Mr. Levitt for coming and presenting this. Going first and you're kind of preaching to the choir when you're talking to me about this, because over here in Ward Three, one of my biggest concerns. Is safely being able to be part of a walkable community, so I appreciate you highlighting. Many concerns that we share and I will continue, there is a question to worry. But little, little soapbox, but I continue to believe that everybody should have a sidewalk to walk on. I only think you don't need one, but I do think you need one. And I think that while there is no walkable sidewalk in Bayport, it is important to highlight that, we really expected that would happen last year and it did not. There are certainly some improvements now that the road didn't flood in two thousand and nineteen, there was a flood across that road where the broken sidewalk and rubble were. So you could be walking down and there'd be rubble and ice underneath the snow and it was. More dangerous than it is now, but having no sidewalk, I think is something that needs to be pointed out. That said, my question around that is, I see this as a short term request. Because I expect you to have a sidewalk in the future. That we would then be able to plow your sidewalk in the main community down there. And is that something that you have considered that this is basically to have a walkable sidewalk as opposed to something that would be. From now on into the future?
Well, to be honest, I'd like to see it as a, as a permanent ongoing service. But I do acknowledge that the real requirement is to have a way to walk safely. And having it as an ongoing would provide us a nice way to walk, so there is a difference between must have and would really like to have. So I do acknowledge that difference.
Thank you, yes, I highly support the must have piece of this.
Did you have another follow up question? Sorry, Counselor Cunningham, I missed that second part.
My other question is more for us, I don't see a motion arising from this, I see this as being in multiple parts. So while we're dealing with traffic coming and e-bikes and things like that in this session. Though we don't have a motion arising on the plowing of that trail. We won't likely see that in this meeting, but it is something that I would bring forward to a future meeting.
Wonderful.
In our next agenda.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Levitt, the timing for both your presentation and the next one. I don't know if this was just happenstance, that it happens to be when this other bylaw about our parks and trails comes back to us. But if it was, then, you know, well planned, well played, because we need really needed to have this discussion tonight, so thank you for the presentation. I too have enjoyed your trail, I, I see the, the issue with the motorized vehicles and the e-bikes on most of our trails and in the parks. I am not down there as often as I'd like to be, but when I do, it's, I can't go a single time without seeing, they are everywhere. Most of them are being operated safely and with courtesy, but there's always the outliers. One of my questions for you is about those barriers, I think I've experienced them in Tiny and Tay and I think they're wonderful deterrents. They are a little unsightly, but they kind of have to be painted bright enough that you don't, you know. Hurt yourself because you don't see it, we can't camouflage it or make it look like a tree. But would you, are you aware of some of the strategic and liability issues? That the town faces by engaging and plowing trails. Offseason, basically in the winter time. The reason I ask you and I'll let you answer is that I tried sort of unsuccessfully to lobby to have that done to our Little Lake Park Trail, which is very well used in the winter time as well. And our, you know, Mr. Campbell, who I'm sure will chime in in a minute. Educated all of council on, on the very real liabilities of what happens to. What responsibilities befall us as soon as we start to maintain a trail or to plow at once. And what, and I'd rather not reiterate that because I may get it wrong, but Mr. Campbell talked about it, but were you aware that there's some sort of collateral? Costs and responsibilities that would befall the municipality if we were to start maintaining that trail in the off season?
Not specifically, I know that once you start doing it, you have to do a good job. You couldn't just clear the snow without doing the remediation for, for ice, for instance. But, and I know each part of this has a cost, but in terms of liability. I had not gone into that and I would expect that if there was a motion to do some, some trail clearing, then that would be part of the consideration of that motion.
Thank you very much, you had a follow up, Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, maybe if we could just get Mr. Campbell to refresh all of our memories of what he told us, because I too is. And remained really supportive of having these multi use trails cleared in the winter, even at cost. Understanding there's a cost to that, but there was some cautions that Mr. Campbell had laid upon us and might be worthy of sharing now, not only for this presentation, but perhaps for the next one too.
Mr. Campbell, you care to share? A couple minutes, please?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Gordon and the rest of council. Even Mr. Levitt hit it perfectly, once we start maintaining it, we have to do a good job and therefore we need council to give us a budget and resources to do it. If, you know, Counselor Cunningham brings a motion forward in, in the future and that, and council wishes us to maintain this trail in the winter. You know, we just have to see how we can fit that in with our current resources, if we have the ability, or we'll have to ask council for additional resources. But to the liability issue. Slips and trips and falls on our sidewalks and trails are one of our largest liabilities, we have a number of court cases going on about. Injuries currently in the winter and in the summer and. The, by not opening it as we've done in the past, we have limited our, our liability, because if we close. A trail or a sidewalk and do no maintenance at all, if someone does hurt themselves, we have. We have done our due diligence and have our defense in court.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell, follow up, Counselor Gordon?
Just one more, because it's along the same line. And I'm just concerned that Mr. Levitt is doing this fantastic thing for the community by volunteering and going out there and, and clearing this. Is he exposing himself inadvertently to any liability that maybe, you know, he's not anticipating right now, I'd just be really. saddened if something happened as a result of his good deed.
I'm not sure if you care to answer, it'd be up to his homeowner's insurance, but it's, if you'd like, Counselor, sorry, Mr. Campbell, please do.
Clearly. You know, residents, you know, clearing that trail on their own, if an accident happened and the town, you know. Was sued, you know, we'd have to decide how would we defend ourselves against this action. Personally, I was unaware of the residents doing it and my caution would be for them not to clear it on their own, that would clearly be my, my advice to them.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Your worship?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, Mr. Levitt, you, you presumably are aware of the bylaw that's going to be before us this evening. Your, one of your concerns is speed, another concern is vehicles that may or may not be appropriate for the trail. Is this by law meaning? The most or, most or all of the objections that you have put forward this evening, aside from the plowing part?
Well, yes, at least, so it's. The timing is coincidental and I know as a, knew the bylaw was being looked at, but the bylaw is not enacted. If you, if this bylaw passes, then it actually, it makes me feel very happy. So I mean, most important thing is, and even having resources and therefore for some enforcement is, is a very good, very good start. And this is, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Please, the, the, the other aspect of this is and it's sort of. It's back to a sidewalk and perhaps a sidewalk with a view personally. I enjoy driving through your neighborhood, I think it's quite well done, so I think the view is actually pretty, pretty great, if even if you're not on the trail, but. Last winter. About a hundred meters of the sidewalk was disrupted as a consequence of some foundations being put in and so residents were forced onto the travel portion of the road. Despite assurances from the builder to the town, to the contrary, this was a temporary thing, it persisted for some time. I don't think that the town is likely to make that mistake again. And so my guess is that the sidewalk will be available and maintained. By snow removal equipment, so that being said, would that satisfy your needs, aside from the desire to?
Yeah, well, that is, last, it had a ripple effect, the portion that was not able to be cleared. Actually prevented the snow clearing equipment from accessing another portion, so we actually had half a kilometer or thereabouts unplowed. And that was actually made a very good speedway for the snowmobiles, I'd rather there than in the back. But again, yes, that meets the, the need portion of, of what I like, what I'm asking for, so.
Follow up, your worship?
Just one last thing, and it's more of an observation, the barrier that you proposed. Aside from liability issues and all the rest of it. Barrier, I think, might have an impact on the ability of the snow removal crew to even think about going on the trail, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was my point, that if we can't do clearing, can we have a barrier that's effective, it's not both.
Fair enough, thank you for your presentation, I, I too enjoyed the aerial view from your drone, very, very spectacular, really, so thank you for your presentation.
Counselor Maine, you have a question, sir?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on, I thought the presentation was very well put together and I wanted to concur with the thoughts on. Twenty kilo, twenty kilometer an hour speed limit, but also around the notion of trail etiquette, that's something that I've, I've said that. That's the area that we probably need to be focusing on and so I wholeheartedly support that. It's tricky because there's not like a Canadian Centre for Trail Etiquette Excellence or whatever, so we're kind of looking at other municipalities, what they do with that, but. I wholeheartedly would agree that trail etiquette is, that's the low hanging fruit, as they say. That I think we're very warm and friendly here, it's a small town, everyone's, you know, but the. The trail has got a little crowded over the last year with the pandemic and outdoor recreation, so. It might be, it might be time for a refresher on trail etiquette to make sure that everyone's courteous to each other, so I want to thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Major. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Levitt? I see none, I want to thank you, sir, for coming this evening. And you'll see that we have a new motion coming forward and you heard Counselor Cunningham. Maybe bringing something forward at a later date, so I want to thank you very much this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a concern regarding e-bikes on Tiffin Easement Trail. And Mr. Mund on behalf of the Tiffin Homewares Association Trail Safety Committee to provide a presentation, Mr. Mund? You with us this evening? Oh, I see your name on there. You may be muted, sir. Hi, how are you today? I'll remind you that you have ten minutes to do your presentation. I want to thank you for coming this evening. And I'll turn it over to you. It's all yours, sir.
Well, it's my pleasure, Deputy Mayor Ross. I remember, I don't think we've seen each other since we judged the butter tart competition two years ago. Butter tarts each of it.
Yes, that was quite the day. And I appreciate you coming this evening. That was a fun time. I hope we get back very, very soon. I think we may have lost you, sir. Sure, I think we might have lost Mr. Mund. I see his name still up there, but is anybody else hearing me? Everyone's hearing me. We're not hearing Mr. Mund. Sir, I'm not sure if you can want to recall in or try another line, but we definitely do not have you at this point. He's definitely gone. I would suggest maybe we take a a couple minute break at seven thirty right now. If we want to resume at seven thirty five, we'll allow Mr. Mund. Because I think it's important to hear the presentation. I'd hate to move on the agenda with regards to the motions that we have coming out of this. So if it's an agreement with the rest of council, we'll give a five minute break. We'll resume at seven thirty five. We'll allow Mr. Mund to rejoin the meeting. Is that fair with everybody? I'm seeing not a heads. All right, we'll stop for.
Deputy Mayor? I just got a text from Counselor Prost who finished as well. The power just went out on that side of town.
Oh, that explains it.
That might, it might not be a five minutes.
It may be a while. I'm not sure how to even move forward on that point. I've never had a power outage. Usually, we're here, we all get the power out together.
Did Madam Clerk have a comment?
Miss, Miss Edgar, any plans or I see your hands up? You're on mute?
Hi, I'm just on Catherine's computer because mine has frozen. I'm not sure why my hand's up either. So I've just sent an SOS to Zach. He's going to come and help me, but for some reason, my Zoom screen has totally frozen. I can't do anything with it.
Okay, well, let's let's take a ten minute break then. We'll resume at seven forty. And we'll see where we're at. Is that all right? All right, we'll see everyone in ten minutes. Apologize to the public for the issues, but it is fun doing the Zoom meetings. So we'll see you all in ten minutes. I apologize to our public out there. We had a little bit of technical difficulty. I believe the power went out on the east side of town. But I think we're back up running. We have Mr. Mund here from the Tiffin Bay Homeowners Association that's going to do a presentation. I see Counselor Prost is back, so thank you. And we'll remind you, sir, that you have ten minutes. I'll give you a two minute warning when we get down to the remaining two minutes. But we have a little leeway, so but if you wrap it up,
Fair enough.
That in ten or eleven minutes, that'd be fantastic. And please stick around. I'm sure there'll be a couple of questions from the committee.
Okay, well, that's just great. Well, as I was saying, I'm so appreciative of your time tonight to make this presentation. And I thank Miss Edgar as well. It was very patient and helpful in setting this up for us. So who we are is the Trail Safety Committee, which was established by the Tiffin Homeowners Association. And that arose because of a number of concerns we've had about what we call the Tiffin Easement Trail. And our committee are THA members and also residents of the Tiffin Bay subdivision. But we are confident that our concerns about public safety in this presentation are widely shared by users of the Tiffany's material from throughout Midland and even beyond. Because that's part of our community. We meet all the trail users every day, and we talk about mutual concerns. First of all, counselors, we commend council for dealing with the suitability of e-bikes in this proposed bylaw in response to public concerns. We think it's great that you're doing that. And while some of our suggestions tonight are going to apply to all Midland trails, our focus really is on our safety concerns in relation to the Midland Tiffin Easement Trail. We are strongly urging council tonight to broaden the terms of your proposed bylaw to regulate the safe use of the trail, which traverses the Tiffin subdivision. And we sincerely believe that without your immediate recognition of real safety problems on our trail over here and proper enforcement, there's going to be a serious accident. In fact, we do believe it's inevitable. Now, the walkway running the length behind the property's long Aberdeen Boulevard is unique, as I'm sure you all know. Previous councils had the vision to preserve the ability of the public to enjoy the beauties of Tiffin Bay. And they did that by securing an easement for public use. And the fact that the trail has become so popular and busy reflects the wisdom of that decision by council. The the Tiffin Trail really is, I'm sure we all agree, a magnificent and enjoyable source of recreation in Midland. Now, those familiar with the easement trail at Tiffin will be aware that it's more in the nature of an ordinary sidewalk than a multi-use recreational trail. There are no public sidewalks along Midland Boulevard or Aberdeen Boulevard, I should say. And the shore path really is the primary walkway for area residents. It's more narrow than most trails. It's twelve to thirteen feet. And it has a number of blind spot turns and and elevations as you go along. Most significantly, the edges of the path are bordered on both sides by continuous fencing. And there are property gates on both sides of the trail for private homeowners. Pedestrians and bicycle users alike find themselves confined on both sides by this fencing. And that makes it considerably more hazardous as far as we're concerned than the usual public recreational trail, which is bordered often by grass. The THA executive or former president and a number of residents and users of the walkway have raised these issues about safety hazards on the trail on a number of times with both staff and some of you on council over the last couple of years. In addition to frequent use of all sizes of e-bikes and even motorcycles, three actually in the last weekend were noted. A small but determined minority of bicycle operators now use the walkway for what can best be described as a high speed racing track. Think the Tour de France. Every member of our committee, literally every member of our five person committee and many pedestrians have had near misses from speeding bikers who often travel three abreast and impacts. Those of us who live near Tiffin can tell you, without exaggeration, members of council, that incidents such as this have become a daily occurrence. I am personally aware of many incidents because I have a two hundred and seventy degree view of parts of the trail. So that's become common. And also many rude and difficult confrontations with riders have become common. Because these people, unfortunately, don't seem to have a care for the safety of the many of the pedestrians using the path. And quite frankly, property owners also risk life and limb when they enter the walkway through their gates in the face of dangerous traffic. Most bicycle riders on the path, as the previous speaker said, are quite considerate, and they operate their bikes safely in accordance with safety rules. And so what we're talking about here in terms of bike regulation is the reckless minority. So we feel that this issue is an unintended consequence of a really good idea by previous councils to secure that easement. Because we're sure that nobody imagined that that the innocent use of the trail could become abused decades ago, as things have changed. Now, at the present time, we don't believe that there are any town regulations governing the safe use of the easement path. Some of these riders that I've been referring to are happy to point out to concerned pedestrians who confront them that they can travel as fast and on any lane of the path that they want to. And frankly, there's nothing that the town can do, that the town has no authority to stop them. The only provision we're aware of, and this is part of the uniqueness of the easement trail down here, is the duty of the town in the contractual agreement that the town entered into years ago to ensure and maintain safety on the walkway. That's still the governing document. But the sad fact is that, and we assure you of this, the Tiffin Trail is now far and safe. That's our everyday observation. The path is entirely different from other trails in Midland, and we believe it needs special consideration in town bylaws to protect the members of the public who use it, particularly pedestrians. It should not be necessary to mention this, but I will anyway. To be clear to all recreational bicyclists and e-bike users, we have absolutely nothing against their safe use. They are great recreation. They're enjoyable. They're environmentally friendly. And many of our members are avid users of both. The issue that I've been tasked to raise with you tonight is the dangerous and uncontrolled use of vehicles like that under those circumstances on narrow and tightly confined space such as the easement trail. And it's our view that no reasonable person watching this hazardous activity every day, as we do, would take issue with this concern when you see what we do and the incidents that we observe. So we respectfully believe, counsel, that it's time for some sort of action to address these issues. I want to address your bylaw that's before you tonight very briefly with respect to e-bikes. We support the proposal unconditionally with respect to the proposed bylaw to prohibit e-bikes. We do ask you to perhaps consider not including as an exemption pedelec e-bikes because of the classes that can weigh up to eighty eight pounds and a speed up to thirty two K per hour. We think the simplest and best solution would be to ban all motorized vehicles whatsoever on the trails, including our trail, apart from disability vehicles, obviously. So we support the thrust of your bylaw, and we congratulate you for coming to terms with this difficult issue. The main concern, though, that we have, you will have guessed, is bicycle regulation. Now, in our view, the most simple, cost effective and enforceable way to ensure pedestrian safety on the Tiffany's material is to reroute bicycle traffic down Aberdeen Boulevard from the path with marked bicycle lanes. But we realize that would be quite unfair to the majority of safe and courteous riders who enjoy using the Tiffin path every day. So as an alternative to what I still believe is the most effective option for you to consider, you might also think about implementing certain bylaw provisions specifically designed to govern traffic on the Tiffany's material because of the unique quality of it. And that would include the following provisions, we believe. First of all, while I've heard other speeds mentioned, given the safety concerns and the fact that it's really a sidewalk, not a trail, we believe a fixed speed limit for all permitted vehicles should be fixed at ten kilometers per hour.
Two minutes, sir.
Thank you. We believe larger, consistent and clear signage about speed limits, what vehicles are prohibited and trail safety rules is a must. And we recommend that those rules be painted on the sidewalk along with the words "slow" in large letters. We believe that entry barriers such as removable posts and our entry gates be erected at access points to the trail. I noticed the Tay has such entry gates in place with dismount signs encouraging riders to slow, get off their bike and walk through. And another thing we're suggesting is regular and systematic enforcement of trail rules. And we note that staff has provided a budget item for bylaw enforcement in the proposal dealing with e-bikes so far. And we too much tell you that we disagree with those that think that safety enforcement is impossible, difficult, but not impossible. You will certainly never be able to legislate common courtesy. We know this. But we believe that a public education campaign followed by a ticket blitz, maybe using speed guns, could be effective in slowing traffic. So we think enforcement is possible. Our committee, I can tell you, is also prepared to help Midland roll out a public safety awareness campaign in the two thousand and twenty two season. I've already heard some discussion about this tonight, but some municipalities like Toronto have campaigns for bike etiquette and safety rules. And we would be prepared to assist with that on the ground to spread the word on those rules. It really all comes down, especially in a place like Midland, to good manners. And we're prepared to politely reach out to those riders who may not realize to what extent they're endangering pedestrians on the trail, including seniors and children. We feel strongly that it would be a shame if this safety issue, which we believe has affected the enjoyment of this wonderful recreational resource in Midland, should be allowed to continue. Because the Tiffany's material was built at the behest of previous councils for the safe enjoyment of all of us. So we urge council to take some form of action to avoid what we believe, without exaggeration, is a potential tragedy on that trail if unheeded. So this is respectfully admitted by our committee, made up of myself, other residents, Joe Angus, Art Young, Susan Kusar, and Christie Rose, and on behalf of the Tiffin Homeowners Association. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your patience with my presentation and the glitch earlier.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mund, and greatly appreciated. I know I see we have some cards already, so please stick around. We'll have a few questions for you. I see we have Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Gordon. I'll start with Counselor Gordon this time. Counselor Gordon, you're up, sir.
Thank you very much, Douglas, for your for your presentation. I appreciate having it advanced too, to give me a chance to really go over it and mull it over. And consequently, I was able to engage with our bylaw officer, Mr. Reicheld, this week with some of the suggestions you made to basically bounce off feasibility to try and speed things up for tonight. My biggest thing is I think all your suggestions make perfect sense to me. The paint on the trail, the signage, you know, the the access gates, I mean, our previous presentation would benefit from them too. I think the rules are all wonderful and they're passive techniques. Signage, of course. The biggest trouble I came to is what are we going to do about enforcement? I approached the topic about speed guns. And perhaps Mr. Mr. Reicheld could speak to that, rather than me trying to reiterate the whole email chain. And also about bylaw officers, whether they be students or even Mr. Reicheld himself, whether they have the authority to compel somebody who they believe is committing an infraction to stop, dismount, identify themselves and take a ticket. And the short summary is, no, we don't. We're toothless dogs. And, you know, basically, they can flip us the bird and keep on driving, and we got nothing. There's no license plate to write down. There's nothing we can do. That that's the the sort of sad reality from the rather long protracted discussion I had with Mr. Reicheld. Perhaps he could elaborate on what options we have for enforcement of this bylaw that we're considering passing, and I'm sure we'll pass tonight. And other ones on the trail system when it comes to cyclists and e-bike users.
If you don't mind, Counselor Gordon, we'll we'll ask that question when we get to the bylaw itself. If you have any questions for Mr. Mund, we'll we'll use that, and then we'll we'll definitely get, I already have a plan to get an update from Mr. Reicheld before we move forward with that bylaw. So if that's fine with you, I just want to make sure, Mr. Mund, any question for Mr. Mund at this point?
Well, maybe perhaps, because I'm sure you guys have thought about this, is there any light you could or opinion you could share with us about what you think we could do to actively enforce these regulations, which, you know, clearly are only going to be targeting those who choose to disobey the rules. People will obey them.
Well, I have hesitated to say this, but I have had some involvement in enforcement of rules for the last fifty years. And I think there's always a way to enforce. I think public education is where you start. Etiquette, etiquette that most of us in this call were taught when we were children by our parents, which also is good manners. I guess I'm not going to give a legal opinion because that isn't appropriate, and it's beyond the ken of my submission. But I'm skeptical with any opinion that casts doubt in your ability to enforce your own rules. I think there must be a way. I have talked to people in Toronto, and they do enforce Robert Strickly on their their town municipal trails, especially at the waterfront, speeding regulations. I've heard people that have paid the price for going too fast. So I I'm skeptical. I think you can always do something. I think we, I've met people that say, well, there's nothing you can do, but with respect, you know, we have a system of laws in this country, and while you can't legislate common sense or good manners, everything you can do makes a difference. Even those speeding signs that we all see on the roadways, you know, slow down, you know, you're going a certain speed. When I lived over in in Tiny or at least had a cottage over there, they were very effective in moving traffic down, decreasing the speed on Tiny Bitch's Road, those signs. And I do believe they work for bicycles, reminding people of their speed. So as to speed guns, I'd have to talk to the police officers, I know, to, you know, determine whether, in fact, they would work. But I really think you can enforce it. I would be surprised if you couldn't. And as as the toothless dogs, no bylaw officers I've ever no bylaw officers I've ever met would dare have that description. They're very good at what they do, and I think they'd find a way.
I appreciate the insights, and you're going to definitely contribute to some good, healthy debate tonight as we discuss this bylaw in its current format.
Well, thank you, Councillor Gordon. I appreciate that.
Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for bringing this presentation, Mr. Mund. I definitely agree with most of what you're saying about what is needed and what you see. I do ride my bicycle along there. Unfortunately, I'm not fit enough to even speed to get to your ten-kilometer level most times.
I just asked, I'm gonna give you some water.
And I also see your point about those fences making it a different character of trail. The width, when people are courteous, is fine. It's when you see people coming around that little corner where luckily you have a broken sidewalk. Is that broken piece just at that blind corner? Thank goodness. It's like, did somebody go out and do that on purpose as a great traffic calming technique? Probably not. But along those lines, my question for you is, I see the bylaw officers out in Tay enforcing motorized vehicles and concerns on the trail, and they need to pick and choose their times. When we have a population who is able to tell us when to pick and choose our times, is that a role that residents at Tiffan might be willing to play, to say, here's what we see, it's Saturday mornings at ten a.m., that would be a great time? Do you have some patterns that you could share with us later even in the year?
I certainly could, and I have the advantage of just observing it every single day. You know, if people are going too fast, you know, I have my old boat air horn to remind them, which my neighbors don't like, but that's effective. You know, there are peak times, the weekends, obviously. Today, or in those hot days, not a lot of bikes out there. And what we're talking about is the spandex ballet. Right? They look really good, too, but they're just going so fast. And they're just in the speed zone. I don't even think they realize how fast they're going. But the incidents that disturbed me, my committee, and a lot of the THA members are truly frightening. Somebody walking a dog on one side, somebody with a baby carriage in the other, and a speeder that goes right through, very fast, very upset. We have seen that. I've had family members that were almost hit. And you go down on that trail with somebody speeding at those speeds, you are not getting up readily. So it isn't being dramatic. It happens to be the truth that we see. So, yeah, we can tell you, there are times, you know, that aren't as busy or much of a risk when the clubs come through. Again, most of them, fine, but we could do that, yes. What a long-winded answer. I apologize.
Councillor Cunningham, follow up?
Yes, please. I also wonder if you would be open to us putting some of the signage on that fence or possibly on properties. There's a couple of points where you just kind of slow down. There's a little porcelain dog or ceramic dog whose nose kind of pokes out that gives you pause, that it looks like a dog's going to jump out onto the trail. And I love that because it reminds you that you're sharing the trail. In Severn Township, they have silhouettes of children wearing backpacks at the edge of the road that are moving around. Just to remind people, because I do think that a lot of the people are being thoughtless when they're doing that, as opposed to deliberately hogging the trail or being inconsiderate.
I believe you're right. And I think that signage has been a problem. I think there's generations of signs. I think the previous speaker said much the same thing. Different messages for snowmobiles and no motorized vehicles here, and I think they've been cleaned up a little bit, but they're not consistent, and they're not visible. Not being critical of anybody tonight at all, but the last generation of signs was miniscule. It said, "Slow down, watch for pedestrians," but you can't see them. Okay, so it's got to be rethought before we start over. Most of them are conflicting in their messages. So it would help to have signage, and I'm sure we cooperate with them anywhere. So.
Now, Mr. Mund, if I could, I'd like to ask a question. By the conversation we're having, it seems to be it's the speed issue, and we have missed two Councillor Gordons up. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Sorry, you got me there. I apologize.
Sorry, my connection dropped, and I rejoined, and I saw myself doubled. I'm like, you guys couldn't handle two of me.
Oh, boy, I was scared there for a second. I'm kidding. Sorry, Mr. Mund, to get back to my point. It seems to be the conversation is based on speed. If we were all to go slow, would it really matter what type of vehicle was on there, as long as they were all traveling ten kilometers an hour? I feel, you know, a lot of these, I get that, you know, the e-bike, but the province is telling me they're a bicycle, and if it's a bike in the province, I and if we're all going ten kilometers an hour, does it make a difference? Or the fact is, your association wants those off, and then we'll worry about the speed also. I'd like to see us all be able to compromise. I literally see a nice sign that would flash too fast, too fast, that we have on our roadways. A couple of signs might even work with a ten-kilometer max. I would, you know, to me, I would like to make it, I'd have no problem to make it a walking trail, or a five-kilometer trail, or whatever. We could slow this down. I do, I use that trail constantly. I'm out with my partner on a weekly basis. We go so slow. I'll probably have very similar cyclists as Councillor Cunningham would be. And I'm just asking a question. Is it that we don't want these vehicles, or if we could just slow them down to ten kilometers an hour, everybody could live in harmony?
Well, we want to live in harmony. We want to slow everybody down, yes. I think some vehicles are inherently not suited to be on that trail. It's, most of the time, it's twelve feet. We have e-bikes, supposed e-bikes, that look like trucks, small trucks, that are going through there. Some e-bikes look like large motorcycles, and I'm sure they weigh a couple hundred pounds. They're capable of doing seventy-eight K. If people ride vehicles that take up a certain amount of space, and they're going to be tempted to go fast, regardless of the rules, and they're not suited to be on a sidewalk. I mean, imagine, Deputy Mayor, you had a lovely meal with your family, and you go out on that beautiful sidewalk on King Street that council has blessed us with, and you get this sort of swooshing sound by you. All right. It's just not suited for the tiny space. And it really was not anticipated that it was going to be a racing track for all of these vehicles. E-bikes hadn't even been invented yet. They weren't created in twenty-two years ago, whatever it was. So we're not picking on e-bikes. They're great, but on that trail, they are inherently a hazard. Bikes, not so much. They're a hazard if they're ridden recklessly, and they don't share, and they don't use their bells. And we've had as many incidents, more incidents probably from bikes than e-bikes. So.
Okay. I'm just curious, only because, you know, as the technology changes, we now have electronics, electric skateboards that are beyond speed. I was down in Toronto on the weekend. You have these electric scooters that are flying around, and I even saw, I don't even know what it's called, but it was a one-wheeled type of thing, and this guy was flying, had a helmet on, the whole bit, going down the bike trails. And the bike pass in Toronto. So I'm just, you know, we pick one, and I just, you know, I want to make sure how we can all live in harmony, but it sounds like I completely understand your point, and I agree. There are some that I would never think they are. They do look like trucks. I've seen one that pull trailers. So it's supposed to be an e-bike, so it is an interesting argument. Thank you.
Some big vehicles with speed are designed to be on a public roadway, and that's where the Highway Traffic Act comes into it. This is primarily a pedestrian walkway with bicycles permitted. And here we've got this density issue, and it's probably because it's so popular, you know? It's a beautiful trail. Who wouldn't want to be out there?
I a hundred percent agree. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I see none. I want to thank you very much for coming this evening, sir. And, well, please, I'm sure you'll be watching at home, but we'll have the bylaw coming up in the next agenda item.
All right. Well, thank you for your time, and we appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a great day.
You, too. Thank you. And thanks, Ms. Edgar.
Yes, thanks, Sherry, for arranging that and getting us back online. Greatly appreciated. All right, we have no public meeting or hearing this evening, so we will go to the agenda for council consideration. And first up, we have the staff report CSR dash twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four Parks and Trails bylaw dated September first, two thousand and twenty-one, be received, and that the proposed Parks and Trails bylaw be approved and enacted using a phased-in approach to the regulation of the use of e-bikes to begin January first, two thousand and twenty-two. And two, that any required resources for increased enforcement measures be included in the two thousand and twenty-two draft budget. I need a mover and a seconder on this item, if I could. Moved by Councillor Gordon, seconded by Councillor Strathern. I will turn it over to Mr. Reicheld. If he could share, you've heard Councillor Gordon had a question, and if you could provide some insight, that'd be wonderful, and we'll move on from there, if that's fine with council. Mr. Reicheld?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you to the rest of council. You will remember this came before you back in May and was deferred until today for consultation with the public. We did receive some some suggestions. We did change our definition from a pedelec to what's called a power-assisted bicycle to align with the recent Moms Act or Moving Ontarians, sorry, Moving Ontarians More Safely Act. We took their definition of that pedelec or pedal-assisted bicycle and inserted it. Other than that, no significant changes to the bylaw from the first one you saw. And to enter the speed enforcement section, there is no speed limit set out in this bylaw at this time. While it isn't impossible, it's just resource-intensive and expensive to obtain speed limiting, or sorry, speed-measuring equipment, training, certification, and whatnot. It can be done. I'm not saying that. Toronto does it, as mentioned, with their MLIOs. They pair with Toronto Police Service to conduct those blitzes because the Toronto Police Officers can affect these traffic stops and demand the ideas required, while MLIOs cannot. Tiny does trail enforcement with the OPP at cost. They do a pay-duty type program to assist with that. So not saying it's not doable. I'm saying it's difficult. As far as signers that is included in this bylaw, we want to revamp our sign program along this trail to reflect the rules and agree that they do need updating. But other than that, it's mostly unchanged from the bylaw you saw in May.
Mr. Reicheld, if you could share with me, and I'll move on to Councillor Gordon after. This trail connects to the Tay Rail Trail. And would they have to say, if we were to enact this bylaw, do they have the same enforcement that we're looking to do? I'm just asking the question whether somebody gets on their, whatever type of device they decide they're going to travel with, they get on at Wiberry, I'm sorry, Victoria Harbour and travel into Midland or Penetang. Is it the same throughout the whole trail, or does it change as they enter Midland?
No, it's a change. Tay does prohibit e-bikes and motorized vehicles on the trail, so there'd be no change, possibly other than these power-assisted bicycles. But they do reactionary enforcement for the motorized vehicles and e-bikes on their trails already. And this bylaw was derived from parts of theirs to assist in consistency.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councillor Gordon, and then I'll go to Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Reicheld. Back, I don't know, whenever we first started talking about this, I know one of my concerns, I think, in raising the original motion was to harmonize the regulations on our trail system, so it isn't confusing that you come to the boundary in Tiny or the boundary in Tay, and all the rules change, right? That doesn't make any sense for the people using it. So I'm glad that you've done that research, and we found that harmonization that we were, you know, that I was hoping for anyway. My only, my one concern, of course, was enforcement, and, you know, I wasn't meaning to belittle the profession by, you know, calling you a toothless dog, but I mean, I've also said to other people that, you know, mall cops have more authority than bylaw officers, which it's sad, but it's a, it's a reality that we have to face. You know, it's different putting a ticket on a parked car, the license plate, than it is trying to effectively affect a traffic stop against somebody who's, you know, likely going to get a ticket. And then there's the whole ID thing. So us pairing with OPP to do some enforcement, if that's in the budget and is reasonable, and OPP can provide the manpower, I'd support that. I mean, that would give you guys the teeth that you need to do some enforcement around this. So I think that's a good idea. I know it doesn't speak to this in the budget, but it may be something you've got time now, between now and budget time. The second thing is one we've had, again, I love getting these things in advance, there's going to be a chance to really digest it and read it and parse it. There's that definition that you changed based on that Moms' definition. And while I get it's a provincial definition for a power-assisted bicycle, and it makes sense to copy and paste the provincial definition, I think the province got it wrong with this definition, and I think we have an opportunity to do better. And I gave some back-and-forth examples of how the current, the way it reads right now, definition of a power-assisted bicycle could very easily be argued, and I believe successfully, that if you tried to jam someone with an e-bike ticket, they would just say, no, Jim, it's not an e-bike, it's a power-assisted bicycle, and here's why. And they wouldn't be nitpicking. They would literally be following the, you know, one, two, and three, the main three sections, the first one being we've defined it that it has to have two or three wheels. Okay, fair enough. My e-bike, I'm going to hypothetically have an e-bike, one of those motorcycle ones that look really off-road and cool. It has two wheels, so check. It's a, so far, it's a power-assisted bicycle. The second one is where the wording says, "is fitted at all times with pedals that are always operable to propel the bicycle." Fair enough. My e-bike has to be fitted with pedals at all time, or it ceases to be an e-bike, and I would get a ticket if I rode it on the roads. Nothing compels me to use those pedals, and typically, the only time someone does is when their battery goes flat. So the fact that I, my pedals are always affixed to my motorcycle e-bike, but tucked up in a way, and I'm always capable at any time of using them if I wanted to, but nothing compels me to use them to meet this definition. So I simply prefer to use my throttle, or whatever it is, twist, I don't even know how it works, instead of pedaling. So our section two, my e-bike, meets the section that could easily be defined as a power-assisted bicycle. The next, number three, is capable at all times of being propelled on level ground solely by using muscular power to operate the pedals. Fair enough. Yes, my e-bike motorcycle is always capable, at all times capable, but not required, of using my pedals, and I will do so when my battery dies. So I suggested some wording changes to this that removes that ambiguity entirely and puts it back to what it really was intended to do, was to differentiate between an e-bike that you don't have to ever pedal to make it propel, you simply squeeze the throttle or turn it or whatever you do. No pedaling involved. Whereas a power-assisted bicycle won't move an inch. You'll fall over and land right on your head unless you are turning your, putting your feet on those pedals and pedaling. The only time that the power assist kicks in on a pedelec or a power-assisted bicycle is while you're actively pedaling the pedals. Soon as you cease pedaling, the motors disengages, and it's not driving anymore like a motorbike. And I know that's what we're trying to differentiate in this bylaw, but our wording, and I know we copied it from the province, but the province clearly doesn't get things right all the time. Our wording is so ambiguous that, you know, if we lay a charge like this, anybody who's watched this meeting is just going to use my arguments right now and get the ticket defeated. I mean, I just don't see how it would hold up in court. So I suggest, and I got to scroll down here, bear with me. I suggested that we, well, you have it, Jim. I suggested that we change the wording to make it less ambiguous. And I don't know if I need to read that in, or if we want to talk about this in any more detail, or if you've had time to come up with some yeah-buts against my simple arguments on why my motorcycle e-bike fits the power-assisted bicycle definition that we're considering in this bylaw.
Mr. Reicheld, you care to comment before I move on to Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. No, no yeah-buts. I will say that your motorcycle-type e-bike is already not permitted due to the actual definition that says does not resemble a scooter or motorcycle. But if council wishes the definition to be altered to incorporate that that portion that must be pedaled the whole time, I have no issue bringing it back if that's the wish of council. We, like I said, we did pull this from the Moms Act to be consistent, because everything's changing with the e-bikes. The Highway Traffic Act is going to be changed shortly. I'm anticipating, but anticipating by the end of the year to reclassify and redefine them.
So it's going to be up for us to make sure that we're making sure that when things do change, that we update our enforcement and able react as we're coming to the end of, you know, bicycle year now. It really is going to be something that we're going to come in fresh in next year. It really is going to be something that we're going to come in fresh and in 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 next year, I I'm presuming, is that correct, Mr. Raikal?
Yeah, we we uh asked for this ban to be implemented for two thousand and twenty-two. Um and if and when the Highway Traffic Act is amended, uh we can um go ahead and amend our bylaw to reflect those new definitions.
Councillor Gordon, you had a follow-up?
Only that, you know, I don't, I'm like, we don't want to change this and leave it like it is, fair enough. It's not to me, it's not a reason not to pass this. I want to give our bylaw officers the best possibility of getting a conviction for an offense. If we're going to go through this, the process and limit these things and put restrictions in place, let's make sure we've, you know, you know, stack the deck in our favor that we can actually win these charges in court and they don't just throw it up for ambiguity, which happens an awful lot in court, so I'm not going to, you know, push this, I'm just concerned that we've made it too ambiguous. We should really be saying that the the power assisted bicycle is clearly something that will only assist whilst pedals are being actively turned by the rider and that clearly does, you know, delineates it between an e-bike where you don't need to pedal unless your battery goes dead.
Right, okay, thank you councillor Gordon, your worship.
I'm sorry, I thought councillor um Cunningham was next.
Apologize, we'll go to councillor Cunningham and your worship, councillor Cunningham.
And I was going to defer to his worship as well in case he was going to be speaking to the e-bike. Um note, whereas mine is going to be speaking more to the speed limits. Uh I understand that a lot of things may not be able to be enforced and we can never enforce something a hundred percent of the time. And yet if we come back to the idea of signage and education being very, very strong influences on people. One reason I would speak for putting an in-town speed limit is our bike trails are going to get nothing but better and more popular. If you look at Tourism Ontario and what's happening in cycling tourism and how attractive we are to Quebec uh for cycling, prior to the pandemic, there was a ton of things happening and it's not going to get less attractive to cycle along Georgian Bay, I'm sorry. Um and so I think maybe working with our tourism uh DMO to talk about itineraries and doing some education for people coming into town um and some of our trail guides around speed limits would be effective because people don't necessarily consider that they are whipping along when they're just getting a nice breeze and feeling powerful. However, if we have a posted speed limit on our in-town trails, you're entering the town of Midland, welcome. Speed limits in town are are ten kilometers an hour for walkers or cyclists, I guess. No faster than. And then recognizing that, yes, we cannot necessarily enforce that, but we can use it as a point of education and courtesy. And again, I would not vote against this, I I really love what we put together here. I truly appreciate that somebody isn't going to be coming from Victoria Harbour, arrive in Midland and have a whole different set of rules to follow. And that there's been great thought and consideration to this. And if we were to add a speed limit, I think it would just make it um and a tool for education as well.
Thank you councillor Cunningham, your worship.
I thank you Deputy Mayor. Believe this, been reviewed by the solicitor. Um it strikes me that she would have an eye towards the ability to enforce. Um I look at the definition of sorry, I just have to scroll up here a bit, a power assisted bicycle with um sorry, I misread it, I thought it said less than thirty-five millimeters, but not less than thirty-five millimeters, so I'm mistaken on that. But a big point here is that I believe the solicitors looked at it, I know that the um Moms has not been passed. Uh it will likely be. And it and that we, when we start creating our own definitions and we start to fall into always trying to vet provincial legislation. So it's and you see this in planning with respect to definitions and so they actually now embed and identify that they've embedded in some of the planning documents, provincial designations, provincial definitions. So that when when the province decides to make a change, it automatically applies as opposed to having to go back and audit and edit, spend so much time doing that. So uh while I appreciate that councillor Gordon has made some interesting suggestions with respect to uh forcibility and I suspect that people will take those into account, think about them. I think it's important that we do follow the provincial, however flawed, insofar as um just being able to track the changes and be in the position that we can always point to the superior authority and say, well, that's the definition. And here's the prescriptions that we put in place with respect to that definition. I think it's also important, uh we've heard from two people with lived experience on the Rotary Trail, basically, we can call it the Tiffin Eusman or whatever you like, but it's the Rotary Trail, I believe. And I do, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Raikal, but I believe this bylaw does cover that particular portion. So um I think that the bylaw as written should pass tonight, I know I'll support it. Uh I I would hope that Mr. Raikal is continually looking at ways of enforcing, whether it's through um paid duty officers or I know that uh conversation with Inspector Evans, he would like to see ability to enforce with respect to e-bikes in in the municipality and would actually like to see it expanded. Uh our ability to control some of the activities with these things. I've seen things out there, people driving around with kids, passengers in the in the secondary, like you'll call it a caboose in the winter time, it just, I just, I can't believe my eyes because if they ever got went out of control and into front of another car, it would be, it would be serious uh injury involved, I'm pretty sure. So I think that I agree with councillor Gordon, the province has made, so I think some mistakes around e-bikes. Uh they do need to rein these things in. Uh purely from a public safety perspective, I also agree that with the presenters that, you know, courtesy should prevail and probably ninety percent of people who enjoy those trails um are courteous and are respectful of other people, backstop, say hello. So uh but I also believe to councillor Cunningham's point that a speed limit should be placed on there. I I don't have any problem, I I you'd be hard pressed to walk ten kilometers an hour, I know I would be. I used to be an active, I used to uh practice speed walking and I doubt I ever got to ten kilometers an hour. But um but it's a speed that you've got some reaction time. I know councillor Maine has uh cited New York and some of the the um speed zones within New York and the impact of going from forty to fifty, for example, and the outcomes in an accident are significantly more serious than if you were going at forty. The same thing applies if you don't have two tons of car around you and somebody hit you at say twenty kilometers an hour with something that weighs a hundred, hundred kilograms. You're you're going to get seriously hurt and we're going to be, again, uh facing some significant liability. So let's start, let's uh support Mr. Raikal in this effort, I know he's put a lot of work into it, I think we all agree that that's the case. And so for me, I'll stop talking here now, I would like to, Mr. Raikal, to clarify though that the different trail is encompassed in this bylaw. Mr. Raikal, could you do that for me, please?
Yes, thank you, uh thank you Deputy Mayor, through you to Mayor Strathern, yes, all trails within the town are uh encompassed as well as trails through parks.
Despite the fact that it's an easement, that's irrelevant.
Uh I but I'm going to say I believe so, um and I'm still having conversations with uh Ms. Lukoko regarding that, but uh at this point, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, your worship, I see your card councillor Gordon, but I'm going to uh see if anyone else has a first question before I take second, councillor Maine.
Yes, thank you, um well, I I'm not really comfortable with banning e-bikes for a couple of reasons. Uh and I don't, I would not say that uh they're not unsafe, but I think you have to do put it into perspective as Mayor Strathern was mentioning in that our roads uh and fast moving vehicles are pose a much significant threat to our transportation network than the trail system does. Um you know, uh somebody on a motorcycle, as there was a fatal uh accident the other day, uh we even know that there was a child that was hit by a car somewhere in town, we got a press release from the OPP. And so the trail, because of low speeds and low inertia, it's not to that late same level where, you know, you come up with terms of vulnerable road users. But I certainly understand the uncomfortableness of of what people are saying, Tiffin's a a little channel, everyone's funneled into it. Uh so I certainly uh understand that, but I would I would lean towards uh speed restriction, speed restriction of twenty kilometers an hour and be much more comfortable with that because I think it's fair and equitable. Uh also just promoting trail etiquette, I think that's a really simple thing to do. Um and so, yeah, uh that was the gist of what I was going to say. I I I'm not really comfortable banning e-bikes at this time. Uh micro mobility is something that we talked about in our transportation master plan. Uh new emergent uh electrical powered uh modes of mobility, electric scooters, electric skateboards, all that is coming down the pipe. And so we got to figure out how to do that because we actually want to encourage people to park the gas guzzler and take a battery powered whatever or human powered whatever. So I I think that's kind of uh goes against our efforts. Uh and also a lot of people who are driving e-bikes, they can't afford cars or um they can't drive a car because of whatever reason and so they have e-bikes because they get seizures or whatever. So I just don't, I'm not comfortable with discriminating on that mode of transportation. So I guess the question for Mr. Raikal is on the speed and trail etiquette um and and to along the lines of how difficult would it be to enact speed restrictions and also what are other ways that we can promote trail etiquette besides just signage? People talk about awareness campaigns, that type of thing. Would the eleven thousand dollars for signage cover trail etiquette signage or would that be something that we'd also have to budget for? So thank you.
Raikal, Mr. Raikal?
Uh so thank you Deputy Mayor, through you to councillor Maine, uh the the sign budget um would come cover the 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 rules of the road, that's a uh signs at major entrances, if not all entrances stating our our regulations, uh you know, the etiquette, of course, uh don't be a nuisance, uh travel at a safe speed, keep to the right uh and whatnot. Um incorporating a speed limit uh again is not impossible. It can be done. Uh we have a lot of trail to cover. Uh and we can be out there proactively as well, uh as well as reactively um provided the bylaw stated passes and we can get the staff to assist with us uh uh and with the OPP for assistance, I want to say blitzes similar to Toronto does. Uh and again, Toronto Police and bylaw not there, out there all the time, uh you'll see the media blast that there are certain sections that are that are problems and and dealing with it there, so that combined with maybe some passive um uh traffic calming type things on our trails, uh maybe some of these gates uh that make you have to dismount a chicane through them and slow down uh will be, will assist. Um again, we'll have to think of something that we can easily deal with in the winter time on certain segments of our trail.
Thank you, follow-up councillor Maine?
Yeah, thank you for that, oh I just wanted to make comment that apparently the when the provincial, if it uh passes as uh as enacted, the the Moving Ontario Better or Safer Act or whatever. Uh not only e-bikes are under review, but e-cargo bikes, which are becoming more popular for young adults, instead of having a car, you have a little cargo bike, you move your kids around, you can get your groceries. And uh there's all sorts and shapes and sizes of them, but because they start pushing the limit of size and weight or whatever and they fall into that e-bike category, they potentially could be prohibited uh not only on our trails, but potentially um provincially as well. So I know there was one member of our act of transportation committee who who has a little e-cargo bike, he takes his kids around and was like, oh, this might mean I won't be able to zip around in town, so I I just wanted to uh propose that as an alternative uh way of dealing with some of the issues, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Maine, uh Mr. Donal, you had something to answer?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I just want to um compliment obviously the um the deputations we received, it's always great to hear from from the public and and their certainly commitment to the trail system and the safety of the trail system that that they all live around and that we all enjoy, so that was great to hear. I want to compliment Jim as well for the work that he did on this policy. There's a few things we asked Jim to consider, what what are our neighbors doing, we wanted to ensure there was some consistency as we've as we've uh all commented on, you know, it's important that you have some consistency with that trail system, so that was certainly part of it. Uh find out what the best practices are. Um so we always spend time trying to understand who's doing this the best, but the nuance in this is you have to find jurisdictions that have the same financial capabilities. So while some of these bigger jurisdictions might have, you know, impressive programs in place, they probably have the financial flexibility or the staff resources to do it, so we have to, you know, modify that for our circumstance. And I think Jim's found that balance with this uh bylaw, it's a start, this technology is moving, no pun intended, but quite rapidly. You know, far faster than ten kilometers an hour probably. And I think we're going to be revisiting this in very short time, the technology to electrify all kinds of modes of transportation is happening at incredibly rapid place pace, as is the terminology. So we did have a discussion certainly with uh Tina on the the terminology, we felt more comfortable with following the Ontario lead at this point. Maybe it may not be perfect, but I think it will, it will need to adjust. Um so those are the the considerations that I think Jim did, I thought they were thoughtful, I think it's a start, I think we're all recognizing that, is it perfect? No, it's not perfect, but I think we can adjust off of it and I think we'll be in a better place if we uh if we decide to move forward.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll uh if I could, uh councillor Maine, I'd like to hand the chair over to you because I would have a comment if I could like to make and then uh if that's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I I am a little, and and I I do appreciate uh Mr. Raikal's hard work on this, I think it's great. Um a couple of concerns I do have, I always am concerned about a pre-budget approval. Uh this is what it is, it's a pre-budget approval, I would like to see this go back into the budget process that we're going to have uh hopefully coming up very soon and and not approve this tonight myself, but uh and secondly, the number one complaint as a a member of councillor that I get is the speed of traffic driving on our streets. And I I I I'm hesitant that we're now going to spend our resources and ask for a joint effort with the OPP and et cetera to slow down our trails when we get over and over and over again complaints with regards to the speed of the on our streets. And I just, you know, it's a lot of money and it's a lot of time and effort and I just, I I am hesitant that, you know, we're uh we're spending money that that uh we could use on every street in the town of Midland to come up with some type of enforcement and do a better job of slowing our cars down, let alone our bikes and things, and I I I completely understand when I hear from the trail and I do not want to see anyone get hurt, but is it is is it not as simple as putting a bunch of uh speed bumps that we put on different roadways along our trails that these bikes can't even travel that fast because of the huge bump that you have to go over or uh and with postings and other ways of slowing down the people rather than having enforcement, I I that's my biggest concern. Over and over again, we hear from every street on town that the people are moving, the cars are driving too fast. And I just, I'm not comfortable moving forward with spending this type of money uh especially a pre-budget approval with regards to our trails. Uh and I completely understand the safety aspect and I think it's important that we have our whole town safe, but I it I am a little bit hesitant, so I just thought wanted to share that, not that I don't support this, I do. Uh it's the idea that, you know, there are other issues in town that we also need to address at the same time, I guess.
Uh thank you, Stat, would you like to respond before I go to Mayor Strathern? No, okay, uh Mayor Strathern, if you'd like.
Thank you um councillor Maine. I think it's important to realize that nowhere in the bylaws budget mentioned. Budgets mentioned in the staff report as a means to implementing in some form or other. Those aspects that are contained within the bylaw. I think the deputy mayor is correct that there are maybe other ways that we approach this, but I think the fact of the matter is is we do need to approach it and it everybody that I've heard from this evening's talked about etiquette, education, those sorts of things, and you can do that fairly inexpensively and build up to and see what the result is. And you can also put a speed limit in there. And there are lots of things that are put in bylaws and so on that sit dormant until you need to use it and then you have it. So I think it's important to decouple the budget conversation, why I I agree with the deputy mayor you don't want to get ahead of yourself with some of this stuff because I imagine there'll be lots of things that will get put on the table when we get into the budget, so. But I think this evening we were being asked to consider a bylaw, not not the budget, budgetary aspects, that will come up in the budget, sure is, we're sitting here. That, that will come up in the budget, sure is, we're sitting here discussing this. But I think it's important to decouple those. So, thank you, uh, Councilman.
Oh, thank you. Um. Well, we got, we hear from almost everybody on this, um, so we're eventually, we're gonna have to make a decision. We have a couple of people that are dissenting. We have a couple of people that would like to fine tune the motion. I'll go to Counselor Gordon.
Thank you. To, to Deputy Mayor's point, I mean, it's a good one. Um, we do have that little pole mounted speed sign now. That, uh, will, I'm pretty sure will capture the speed of, uh, mo- moving bicycle or what have you. Uh, so it might be worth slapping it out there and let's get some evidence. Does it mean we, we defer this thing to get more evidence? I don't think so. We can always change bylaws anytime we want. But we have the technology to do that, so let's get some evidence and put that up on the trail and it would just be neat to get some facts. Not that the, uh, anecdotal evidence we've presented by the residents would be inaccurate, but it's also good to back it up. Secondly, uh, the wording in our, in our report, um, really, I just wanted to let people know I'm not really coming at this from left field. Uh, you know, on page two, the sixth paragraph down in the middle. It, it says clearly, "A power assisted bicycle is a bicycle with an electric motor that provides assistance to the operator only when pedaling." That to me is a pedelec or a power assisted bicycle. That's in the report. However, that does not align with what's in the bylaw. I'm content, uh, that we leave the bylaw defective, in my opinion. Uh, and change it at some other point. But I think we, we'd be, uh, shooting ourselves in the face here if in our public education campaigns, I would prefer to see us not rely on our. Definition in the bylaw, but rely on that statement that's absolutely factual and accurate. That a power assisted bicycle is a bicycle with an electric motor that provides assistance to the operator only when pedaling. And let's really make that the focus of our education to this, this delineate between an e-bike. And the power assisted bicycle, especially because we're proposing banning e-bikes on all of our trails and allowing power assisted bicycles, if I've read this properly. And the second point while I'm talking about this is that to the mayor's point. Aberdeen is included insofar that it's being treated as a trail, but it's not being treated differently. And our, our proponents tonight were asking that we do that and we in fact ban pedelecs or power assisted bicycles from the Aberdeen Trail. While, you know, maybe banning them everywhere, but I don't think they were asking that. They were really just talking about the Aberdeen Trail. And that is not in the bylaw before us tonight. So just to be clear, uh, what they're asking for, we haven't delivered entirely in this bylaw. And I don't know if it's worthy of a round of discussion to see whether we capitulate and consider banning power assisted bicycles. By whatever definition you wanna give them on the Aberdeen Trail, or do we leave this as it's written and allow e-bikes on anything other than our trails? And, uh, power assisted bicycles on all of our trails inclusive. And just a reminder that the e-bike, um, from a, a federal perspective is a motor vehicle. So you can get done for impaired being on an e-bike. But provincially, it's not a motor vehicle. It's just weird. The, the government's gotta get this stuff sorted out, but. Um, that's what we're looking at tonight is the distinction between e-bikes and motor assisted bicycles. And I just wanna be clear that it, the ask that the Aberdeen folks are asking for is not in this bylaw unless we wanna make it right now.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Gordon. Um. All right, so where do we go from here? Um, we have the motion, yes, Counselor Shesky, what would you, would like to add your comments, your thoughts, please? Thank you.
Well, thank you. My spacebar didn't work. That was the first time. Uh, I, I will support the motion as read, uh, if our MLEO gives us the assurance that, uh. In fact, defective after, um, hearing Counselor Gordon, I, I assume that he would say that, uh, after they've had the conversation earlier in the week. And this is how the report was presented to us, but, uh, if he tells us that this, uh, report is how he likes it, then I like it too. And, uh, as for the Aberdeen stuff, I think this is phase one. I think it'll be a learning curve for the, uh, entire population that are affected by this and, uh, to make another area with different set of rules might, uh, not be appropriate at this time. I think that's maybe phase two. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know that residents of Aberdeen are very hopeful for a sidewalk along Aberdeen as well. That's a topic that comes up quite often and that would help resolve some of these issues as well. Um, so the motion is, uh, appears to have support of council. Uh, we just need a mover or a securer, uh, to, uh, but it doesn't appear, uh, Counselor Gordon, that you would like to refine it or amend it in any way at this point. You're comfortable, uh, moving and seconding as, as it's written?
It was moved by, uh, Counselor Gordon, seconded by Counselor Strathern, Councilman.
I'm content. I just wanted to make sure we collectively had discussed everything, including that one sort of glaring omission.
Okay, uh, uh, Counselor Cunningham, further comments, please?
Um, I'm just wondering if there is an appetite at this time to add in the speed limit of ten kilometers without considering that. We may not be able to enforce it, is there? And again, if there's, if you just shake your head at me or nod your head at me, um, that would be my question. Is, is there an appetite to just add that one piece in? Cause I would like to, in that case, propose an amendment to it to include, um, this initial speed limit of ten kilometers an hour in town, which of course is all of Midland. On trails.
I'm content with that.
All right, um, I just have a question for Mr. Raquel then, uh, on feasibility of that, we can add that as a, um. I don't say suggested speed limit, but posted limit and then we can, uh, discuss the implications of that. Mr. Raquel?
Uh, thank you, um, Councilman Maine. Can I, uh, suggest if, if it's the will of council that we pass it as written? And I can bring an amendment to add the speed, uh, regulation at a future meeting? There, there are other sections of the bylaw that will affect our parks going forward, including hours and whatnot, if we're repealing the old one. Um, I can certainly, um, look at that definition and add a speed limit as a, a minor, uh, amendment at a future meeting.
Great. That would, uh, that would be very thankful. Yes, we're thankful for that. So, um, well, I guess there, unless there's any, is there any further, uh, discussion or commentary on, uh, this? We've been talking about enough. Bunch of issues, but, uh, transportation is always a fun topic. So if not, then I believe we're gonna call the motion. Uh, so all those in favor of the motion, uh, as written or as read into the record, please raise your hands. All right, those opposed, just for fun. And, uh, it carries, motion carries. So thank you so much for the lively debate. Thank you to the deputants for raising the issue. Very good timing that, that was brought, uh, this is our e-bike trail park bylaw meeting. And, uh, with that, I'll pass the chair back to Deputy Mayor and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Maine. Great job, as always. Uh, appreciate you stepping in. Uh, next up, we have a poll agenda, a polled item, I believe, uh, Mayor Strathern pulled this item and it's, uh. That staff report CSR dash two thousand and twenty-one dash fifty-five. Simcoe County Municipal Comprehensive Review Status and Land Needs Assessment dated September first, two thousand and twenty-one received. And that council endorsed staff comments as reflecting the position of the Town of Midland on the Simcoe County Municipal Comprehensive Review to date. I need a mover in a second to get this on the floor and then I understand we have, uh, uh, Mr. Farr. Executive Director planning to, uh, give us some, uh, added info. Moved by Counselor Strathern, seconded by Counselor Cunningham. Uh, Mr. Farr, did you have some comments to add? Welcome to the meeting and good seeing you this evening.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Nice to see all of you. Uh, just a few quick comments, uh. First of all, uh, the municipal comprehensive reviews being undertaken by Simcoe County. This is kind of a, an obscure term, municipal comprehensive review. I'm not sure it means a lot to, uh, average people on the street. Effectively what it is, is an exercise that's studying how to accommodate. Uh, projected residential unemployment population growth, um, in municipalities, uh, all across Simcoe County. Uh, the, the origins of this exercise rest with, uh, changes made. Uh, by the current provincial government to the planning regime in twenty twenty. Uh, quite a few changes were made and one of those was to, uh, a plan that's called the. Uh, the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. The growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, it's kind of a mouthful. It's often known as the growth plan. It applies to municipalities as far west and south as Niagara, uh, swings, uh, kinda east of the Niagara Skartment. Um, as far, uh, east as Peterborough, Simcoe County is one of the municipalities within the growth plan. Uh, what, uh, the province did in making changes is it, uh, it expanded the planning horizon for this document to twenty fifty-one. Effectively what this document does is it, uh, on the, on the back of forecasting, uh. Population growth and job growth in the economy over periods of time. It, it distributes population that's expected to kinda come into Ontario across all these different municipalities. And it often works through the county level or the regional level to distribute the population in a kinda more fine grained way into, uh, different communities. So it's a significant exercise, uh, uh, the significance of the twenty fifty-one number. I guess this is follows and the numbers literally, uh, tell the tale. Uh, the growth plan had projected, uh, out to twenty thirty-one, uh, projects out to twenty fifty-one. That means another hundred and ninety thousand residents are projected to come into Simcoe County. And, uh, eighty something odd thousand jobs are expected to be created over the next, uh, thirty years. And, uh, uh, the MCR basically engages, uh, local municipalities. And, uh, uh, questions around land supply, whether they have enough, uh, land to accommodate this growth. Um, and, uh, and how they might accommodate it through things like intensification, which is things like apartment buildings, different types of, uh, housing. And, uh, the supply of employment lands. So it's, it's quite a technically sounding exercise, but it has very meaningful implications for the municipality. It will, uh, impact the way the municipality looks in the future, uh, how it grows. And there are some implications in terms of, uh, um, the municipality's ability to finance itself, taxes for future residences, businesses where people work and live. And, uh, and staff would be kinda engaging with, uh, county, uh, staff. On some, uh, key questions that, that, that feed into this exercise. So that's, that's a quick overview and there's quite a, a number of resources set out in this report that I'd encourage on members of council. And, uh, in fact, members of the public to take a look at, just, uh, if nothing else, so that they understand what this exercise entails. Once the MCR is, uh, has completed, the county will update its official plan, so its overarching planning document. And then all of the municipalities in Simcoe County that follow, uh, was under, under the county's purview. Will be expected to pass amendments to their official plans in turn to conform to this exercise. So at that point, once the MCR is completed, the OPP at this county level is completed, a lot of the real nitty gritty work has been done. So it makes what's happening now quite significant for the town. Uh, because, uh, once it's all done, uh, the town will be expected to, uh, pass amendments to comply with, with the outcomes of the exercise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farr. I'll start with, uh, Mayor Strathern since he pulled this item and then I'll move to Counselor Gordon. Mayor Strathern, anything to add or, uh, comment?
I suppose some questions. Thank you Deputy Mayor and, uh, thank you, Mr. Farr for, uh, outlining. The significance of the MCR. It, it fundamentally does outline to twenty thirty-one, we were looking at growth. Of approximately, approximately twenty-two thousand five hundred individuals and I forgot how many jobs. Now going out another twenty years and I understand from your report yesterday, uh, yesterday, they actually. The conversation around what preliminary, that, what those numbers might be from a preliminary perspective, so. I, I wouldn't mind if you would, I would actually ask you to share what that allocation is because. The, um, it is significant in terms of our ability to grow assessment base and, uh. I understand that, uh, Collingwood, Midland, Penetang Machine and one other municipality were, are basically at the, the, uh. Settlement area corresponds with, uh, settlement area boundaries corresponds with the, uh, what this allocation is about. Uh, so we're not likely to see anything, uh, in addition in terms of growth of the actual settlement area unless we request that. So I'm curious as to what the allocation was for Midland then, since Midland Penetang Machine is actually the designated, um. Primary settlement area i- in this exercise and in growth plan, what the numbers are for, combined for Midland Penetang Machine. Uh, really, uh, how do these, and then how do these numbers compare with allocation to the subject here because for years it's been this sort of. Allocation of growth to the South because of, logically because of its proximity to, uh, GTA. But there is a reason to believe that they're reaching their limits in terms of saturation of watersheds that the wastewater is going into. And there is, uh, they're pumping water from up here down there to meet their growth, uh, demand, so. And there's always this argument that the South is, uh, supporting the North through its, uh, its, uh, assessment base and it's not equitable. And yet this report may in fact continue that, so. I guess, uh, I'll, I'll stop talking and ask you to just give us some of those numbers, uh, if you can, just, it's not privileged.
Mr. Farr?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Strathern. Um, of the number of response, the number of questions. Uh, first of all, uh, the, the numbers for, uh, uh, Midland are, are, will be premature to, uh, uh, release that information, this discussion tonight. Um, there are, uh, discussions underway with the county's consulting team to, uh, to confirm what the quantum is, uh, is like. The, the discussion around, uh, the land supply is, uh, quite nuanced. Insofar as, uh, the town has designated lands for, uh, residential growth. Um, in the greenfield, that's kind of new subdivision, uh, of kind of blank slate development. And then within, uh, the built area, which is, uh, which is sort of self-explanatory and strategic growth areas like the downtown. Um, so one of the key questions that, uh, staff are engaging with the county on is whether or not there's sufficient land supply. To, uh, to receive, uh, potential population allocation. And, um, and that really does strike at the question of whether the, the settlement area boundaries are, uh, are, um. Are, uh, set, set, uh, effectively, uh, to allow the town to, uh, grow. Uh, there are some, um, additional considerations around infrastructure. When you do open up new land for residential development, the municipality, uh, does get involved in extending services. And so there's some questions about the, the economies of scale necessary to support those services and whether there's enough land supply. So it's, uh, what the stage we're at right now is, uh, is, uh, is, um. Um, I guess, uh, kinda deepen the, the technical, uh, uh, components of this land needs assessment. So, uh, so, uh, it, it, it's a little soon yet. We would expect to, uh, come back to council with, uh, more detail either through town staff or county staff. To, uh, uh, provide draft, uh, numbers. Um, your second question about, uh, the relationship between Penetang and, uh, Midland. In terms of whether those are treated as a single consolidated settlement area or discrete areas. Um, was asked and we've asked a number of times and the, the county is treating it, uh, Penetang Machine and Midland as two separate and distinct, uh. Uh, primary settlement areas, so going through all the necessary land supply calculations, uh, on a discrete basis, not amalgamating the two. Um, in terms of, uh, the South versus the North, really the, this, uh, exercise for Simcoe splits the municipalities. Uh, between those municipalities that are kind of GTA oriented and, uh, more, um, berry oriented, I guess is, uh. This would be a simple way of describing it as major, uh, hubs. And, uh, so you do see communities like Collingwood, Wasaga Beach, Clearview, those, uh, are, are, are included in the, in the North Simcoe area. Um, along with, um, Midland and, uh, and, and other municipalities in the North compared to southern municipalities like Bradford, uh, Wasco and Bury. And, um, and other municipalities, the Innisville, for example, in the South. Um, so there, there are different demographic, uh, um, patterns and different, uh, strategic forces that operate. And it have kinda resulted in the splitting of the, of the North and the South. Um, and, uh, and, and there obviously is a significant influence and factor, uh, around the GTA. Uh, that said, uh, staff have, uh, challenged, uh, the county to, uh, um. Get a grasp and an understanding of current trends and to, uh. I guess not gonna plan through, uh, the rearview mirror, if I can use that, uh, analogy, but look forward and look at, uh, trends that are taking the pole. And, um, uh, the county does appear to have recognized, uh, that, uh, there is a more significant growth, uh, occurring. And expected for Midland and would have been the past, would have been in the past, in some cases, uh. Uh, significant in relative terms within, uh, uh, Midland compared to what you might have seen, uh, fifteen to twenty years ago. It's a, it's a different world. Certainly, uh, 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 North Simcoe, uh. Municipalities have also kinda come together like the, the northern North, uh, Simcoe municipalities. To, uh, ensure that the county understands, uh, the dynamics of, uh, the communities, the growth needs. And, and also to ensure that there's an understanding of it, uh, around the current trends, particularly the post-pandemic trends. Um, in terms of how they might impact, uh, the communities. So yes, yeah, split between South and North, but I do think a recognition of, um, of trends, uh, in the North. Um, and, uh. Um and uh in a way that I think would be uh respectful and cognizant of some of the real trends that are occurring in Midland.
Follow up your worship.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and uh thank you, Mr. Farr. Uh for it, it it highlights the I think the uh significance of what's going on in this exercise, but the the one thing strikes me as odd in this uh from your response is that on Schedule Eight and in the actual uh greater goal and horseshoe growth plan, it's Midland Penetang Machine that's identified singularly as a uh settlement area. It's not Midland and Penetang Machine, it's Midland Penetang Machine. So I I don't understand how the county can just turn around and say, well, we're going to ignore Schedule Eight of the growth plan, because that's what it sounds like to do. Um, anyway, I'll leave that for you guys. You're much more uh adept at making those arguments, but it just strikes me as rather interesting inconsistency. But I but thank you for uh for bringing it up. Uh sorry to put you on the spot about the numbers. I wondered, because I was asking a question whether or not I might be privileged uh at this time, so. Um, thank you for your circumspection and answering that.
Thank you.
Councilor Gordon, then I have Councilor Maine. Councilor Gordon?
Thanks a lot for that update. That is quite the read. That is quite a beast of a report if anyone's interested. Glazed my eyes over a couple of times, but it is really important to know. Uh, this is the future that's being planned around us, and we either participate or it runs us over, so. I had a couple of questions about um the scope secondary plan that we we'd started off doing, you know, behind the mall and those properties as well as the development and the infrastructure that we're putting in along Bond Beach Road. The focus when I was reading this of, you know, from my layperson eyes, really seemed to um heavy on on intensification. So infilling, building more in our already established areas. So I'm wondering, are we spending our money and time and effort on this scope secondary plan and looking at developing these greenfields in the future? Are we being unwise now based on what is coming out of this uh review and what the province is pushing? And my second question is, you know, this whole talk about do we have enough land for growth? Well, you know, as we all know, we can't just make more land. So if if Midland Penetang Machine need more growth land, are we annexing from, you know, tiny? Uh, you know, it's really just a sliding rule. You move it one way or the other. Oh, that used to be tiny. Now it's Midland. Uh, you know, what if Tiny's growth? And that Tiny wants to annex some of Midland. Does it work both ways? Like, this whole concept of needing more land, uh I don't know where are we going to get that land? Maybe you could help me out with that one.
Mr. Farr.
Uh three, uh straight Deputy Mayor, uh Counselor Gordon. Um, uh the 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 report, it's not intending to uh suggest that there's a a an overweight uh I just say that right up front. Um, there are are two significant uh um kind of measures of uh urban development um set out and uh in the growth plan. One is intensification, and there is encouragement uh to all municipalities to uh um have a certain amount of growth, uh uh be within the built boundary to intensify, to uh make more efficient use of land and uh and resources. It's also acknowledged, though, that there uh is a market demand that uh is oriented, what we call ground-related housing, which is your standard singly taxed home. And 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 it's recognized that it it's it's a reality that uh growth in Ontario will include a greenfield component. And uh so the the problems does set uh density standards uh for greenfield development. That's uh it's kind of area of intervention. It it tries to encourage again efficient uh um use of greenfield lands. And uh it's viewed as an integral uh component of uh of the development profile of uh of of municipalities. In particular, in a municipality like uh 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 Midland, the character of uh the community is uh is diverse and it includes a a range of housing. And uh and uh this is embedded in the planning documents and and captured also in the infrastructure plans that uh the municipality has approved. And in fact, uh the county uh it it specifically requested the recently approved water and wastewater management plans that uh can scope and plan for expansion of infrastructure. It is a it is a key piece in terms of land supply. As a council is aware, there are a a natural heritage uh uh components to consider in uh in the makeup of Midland's land supply. And there's there is some unpredictability around what the total available land supply, once you've uh um determined the actual constraints behind those natural heritage designations is. And uh and that becomes a an important uh a factor in considering whether overall the municipality has enough usable land supply to meet its uh needs within its existing boundary. It's it's when you start to see um greenfield land uh uh being in short supply or or there being a gap between what it costs, for example, to uh to service those lands and the amount of land that's available to recoup the cost of servicing that you get into questions of of whether or not the boundaries are uh require any adjustment. But that's really a kind of a separate piece. The exercise that's happening now assesses whether uh there's sufficient land to meet the growth pattern. Um, and if there isn't uh sufficient land, um then the question of annexation could come up. So what we're interested in finding as a result of this exercise, is there sufficient supply to meet uh uh the community's needs? And if there isn't, then there may be need to uh to explore other options.
Follow up, Councilor Gordon?
Oh, just uh uh speaking of natural heritage, I I noticed that because there we're in the whole settlement area, there's zero appetite by the province to revisit any natural heritage designations or other than minor tweaks, I think they they put it in there. So anything that we have uh dedicate or identified as natural heritage now in our plan that's gone to the county and, you know, subject to these appeals, I think, that are happening, uh that remains, right? So that kind of uh ties our hands to some degree in development.
Mr. Farr, care to comment, sir?
Yeah, I just want to uh just to be clear for the record that that the the lands designated natural heritage don't uh of necessity mean that they're fully constrained. The the official plan that the community passed allows for the review of that designation and the potential lifting of the designation on a case-by-case basis. It's that piece of it that raises the the unpredictability around the land supply issue. So uh so I I just want to be clear that 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 the current designations that that you see on the recently approved official plan do not lock down um every single acre of naturally designated land. There are mechanisms to assess those and determine whether there is development potential. But it does raise a an element of unpredictability in 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 terms of the the exercise that's going on at the county level now.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. That uh definitely helps with a bit of clarification for all of us. Uh, Councilor Maine?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to uh follow up on the intensification. Did they adjust any of the proportions? Because I knew it was like sixty forty, seventy thirty kind of uh where they were going to say greenfield and then a little bit of intensification, because that might I frankly would like to see less greenfield and more intensification, but then you run into issues of compatibility and gentle density and infill and stuff like that, brownfield uh remediation, that kind of stuff. Are are we still looking at those same proportions uh in this MCR?
Well, the what happened is the the, oh, sorry, I apologize through you, uh uh Mr. Deputy Mayor.
What do you do, apologize?
Counselor Maine, um uh through the the recent updates of the growth plan, uh the province altered the intensification target. It had been uh being proposed at fifty and it was dropped down to forty uh percent of uh of all development. Uh, the the town's uh target is fifty percent as it stands right now. So it is slightly more aggressive uh than the the minimum requirements. So so uh the county overall is examining uh uh the the, I guess, the the intensification standard. I I gather that uh right now, I think the county is averaging about thirty two percent across all municipalities. Um, so it's uh it's reasonably high. Um, but uh, yeah, at this time, we wouldn't be contemplating a reduction in the intensification target. Um, the the only way we would be looking at that in more detail would be in the context of this kind of complex land supply issue that I was talking about. And uh uh staff would have to get more involved in that to really um get a better understanding whether there'd be any impacts up or down on that intensification target.
And and we're still looking at that fifty uh people or jobs per hectare uh target, intensification target?
Uh, that that's on my recollection, yeah. Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions or comments? Uh, I'll go to your worship, then uh Mr. Durrell could have the final word.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Farr. Um, my recollection is that there are provisions for adjustments with the NHS designation in a particular parcel size and smaller, and that's in our official plan. But please, could you clarify for me that if because, whether or not because we have designated lands in Schedule C of the official plan, the primary designation is natural heritage, that we actually have to go, do we not actually have to go to county to make those changes outside instead as opposed to being able to make them ourselves if we go past what was embedded in our official plan?
Mr. Farr.
Uh, well, through you, uh Deputy Mayor, Ross, uh Mayor Strather. Um, uh I I, you know, I'm coming up to speed, to be honest, on uh other towns' official plan policy around natural heritage and uh I'd have to get back to you uh on that. I can tell you that in the cases that uh we've been dealing with that uh we would, before we would ever uh uh kind of submit to uh requiring a an amendment be uh approved through uh the county, we'd explore every other option to allow that uh amendment to occur locally and be effectively an exempt uh amendment. Um, it goes to questions of the scale of uh the issue. So there is some virtue behind um when a county uh approval of a of the municipal official plan amendment will be required. It it's meant when there would be a potentially significant uh issue surrounding the natural heritage, that's my understanding of it. Uh, but uh staff acting uh on on behalf of the municipality would always uh uh work to uh make the the most well-founded, I guess, recommendation to a council and work with our county partners to uh uh arrive at what what is the most kind of reasonable and uh uh kind of prudent uh approach, taking all factors into account. Uh, I I think that that's not meant to sound answer, but it's a, I'm trying to provide a kind of fair uh answer.
Fair enough. Uh, uh sometime when we're having a coffee, I'll maybe ask a bit more around that, but thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farr. Mr. Durrell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and and thank you for uh council's uh interest in in the report. And hopefully, uh the public will have an appreciation for for the level of work that, that, you know, our planning department and others are are committed to in this uh this exercise. We we committed um, you know, uh mid-year when we we had to find some additional resource for planning and we were able to secure people of the caliber of uh Adam here to join the team as well as others, so. Um, I hope the public and council feels quite confident in our abilities. I think we're in a very good position with the caliber of talent. We've we've rebuilt the planning department with uh the current, you know, the people that kept us going through that were absolutely remarkable and and certainly Andy on the call was a big part of that, so. Um, big kudos to them, but I want you to rest assured, this is a really important process that we're participating in. We know that growth is really important for Midland. For for many reasons. Um, primarily because it's, I think it's really fundamental to our sustainability. We've got one of the oldest populations. We know our income levels are uh one of the lowest in in Simcoe, and we need growth both from from a jobs perspective and from a residents perspective. So making sure the uh the province and the county understands what Midland has to offer, what Midland is capable of. And uh also what our needs are is really important. This is one of those processes where we get to call that out. So thank you again for for the examination, but uh most of all, thank you to Adam and his team for for really getting up to speed as quickly as they have and to representing us really well in this process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Durrell, and I want to thank Mr. Farr. Uh, thank you for all the information. Very uh inform, very uh knowledgeable and uh it really helped uh sort out a lot of things that we I was concerned with, so I want to thank you for that. Um, council, you've heard the uh motion. All those in favor? So passed. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next item up on the agenda is the COVID nineteen update. Uh, Mr. Durrell to provide a verbal update. Mr. Durrell?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor and and members of council. I'll I'll go through a bit of information. There's certainly a lot of news broke today uh as far as COVID is related, so I'll touch upon that at the end. Uh, just to start off with the numbers um and certainly uh how Dr. Gardner, our chief medical officer for Simcoe Muskoka's, has um has uh, you know, classified the situation we're in. Certainly, we're in the fourth wave. And uh as of September first, in Simcoe Muskoka, a hundred and eighty-one active cases throughout Simcoe Muskoka. A total number of confirmed cases that we've had, almost thirteen thousand, twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-one. Total number of uh people in the in the Simcoe Muskoka area who have been immunized with one dose, about four hundred and thirty-four thousand. That's about eighty-two percent of the twelve plus population, so eighty-two percent of those twelve plus have gotten the first dose. Uh, about four hundred thousand have been immunized with the second dose, so about seventy-five percent of the twelve plus population has got full immunization. So again, seventy-five percent of the population of Simcoe Muskoka have full immunization. We've had two hundred and fifty-six uh deaths through the the pandemic and uh continue to deal with uh the variant, which is a really challenging, challenging part of this. In Midland, in the uh month of uh August, we had four cases. Uh, none of them are in the hospital right now, which is uh certainly thankful. Uh, but that's happening across all of Simcoe Muskoka. There are twelve people in the hospital right now with uh with the COVID situation. So that's kind of where the numbers are. It's again, they're they're, we all know, we're we're carefully watching this. The the government is paused, moving out of the step three into whatever the next step will be um in watching what's going on, especially for the Delta variant, so a a cautious approach, especially with schools starting for for so many of those children, some of them who who are unvaccinated. Um, on the uh the vaccination front, we did close our mass vaccination clinic. That was a decision made by the health unit. So most of those mass vaccination clinics have closed down. I think one in Barry that still remains open, but they're now going to a more targeted approach of the vaccination clinic. So uh again, just want to call out just what tremendous, tremendous response of our team uh to the call for assistance from the health unit to do this. This was done literally overnight. We we made sure that they understood, you know, we wanted to be available to help the community and not only ours. This is, again, gets back to a lot of the themes we've heard in many things. Midland is an important hub to to North Simcoe. And we've got transit capability, we've got, you know, facilities capability, we have the capability uh ability of uh, you know, staff to help out, serve um the larger area of North Simcoe. Our retailers and businesses do the same thing, so that's why we keep telling the province, it's really important that we reinforce our capabilities to continue to offer those things. And that's what we did with uh the vaccination facility. So back in February, when we looked at this, we turned this up overnight, so. You know, thanks to the to our legal team who had to look at a lot of the agreements to get this done. Um, there's always, you know, there's always insurance aspects that have to be considered and everything. We've talked about those already today. So legal is certainly involved, the HR was involved in that, Chief Ryan, and at the time, our former deputy Gord Roche were very important. But our our rec center folks, under the guidance of Dave Brissette and Sean Burrow, were were outstanding in supporting this thing throughout, uh, you know, from March until August of this year. At that clinic, we we administered forty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-eight doses over ninety-five clinic days. So you can quickly do the math and you can understand that that contribution far surpassed Midland. This was a contribution to to certainly this whole area, and it was because of, you know, the team Midland and what we were able to do in support of the health unit. So a a really big thank to those folks. A a huge thanks to the uh the folks at Simcoe Muskoka Health Unit who pulled this all together, really uh cooperative to work with and very complimentary of our staff. Rebecca Dupuy is the manager that we dealt with. So I wanted to personally uh, you know, call out her, as well as the volunteers. Simcoe Muskoka, to run these vaccination facilities, had over five hundred and fifty volunteers from the community stepped forward Five hundred and fifty volunteers from the community stepped forward to volunteer their time to get this effort done. So again. Tremendous uh tremendous response by everyone in getting that work done. So thank you to all involved. As we said, the strategy now is to go to pop-up clinics, so you're gonna see that amongst around the various areas. There are two that are gonna happen in North Simcoe. Again, more targeted, so uh Friday, September third, there's gonna be one in Penetanguishing. And in Midland on September ninth, there's gonna be a a pop-up clinic at the Georgian Bay District Secondary School. So these are intended to reach out to those demographics that, you know, we need to get to to ensure that they have the opportunity. And that is probably the the biggest factor in that remaining segment of who isn't vaccinated. It's not uh, you know, philosophical or religious differences, it's they don't have, they haven't been able to get to it. You know, so we have to make it easier, so we'll try and and see uh see if those numbers come down. So that was important. The other aspect, and you saw a news article that we released earlier today, there is um some more information that the health unit is uh. Is sharing on using our wastewater uh analysis. So Midland, again. People calling upon the expertise of Midland and our ability to support these types of things. We're one of the very few. Number of communities that were able to participate in the study where you look at, you know, the incidence of COVID that uh takes place in our wastewater. So you you go to the Simcoe Muskoka Health, you know, website, you'll see some of that data that's being shared. Where you can actually see if there's COVID in the wastewater, and that actually pre uh predates the the incidence hitting the community. So again, good uh information that we're participating in to hopefully help uh the larger communities benefit from. So uh thanks to everyone involved in that. The last thing I wanted to comment on were were some of the policy updates that uh literally came out today. So we're taking a close look at these. One is the recommendations that's come down through the through the health unit on vaccination policies for employers. So we've seen a number of some of the bigger employers or bigger cities take uh, you know, attacked on ma- on mandatory vaccination. And and what needs to be done in in the workplace. So today, the health unit published. Their recommendations on what employers should do with the vaccination policy, so. We might see some, you know, standardization around what people do, and certainly at the town of Midland, we're gonna look at this closely. And determine we what we think needs to be done from the vaccination policy. So that came out today, and again, that's available on uh the Simcoe Muskoka Health Unit website. And the last thing I'll comment, and I think this was, you know, certainly the news of the day, is is the uh the government. Announcing that they are going to require proof of vaccination in select settings. So the government, in consultation with the chief medical officer, will require people to be fully vaccinated. And provide proof of their vaccination status to access certain businesses and settings starting September twenty-second. So that was announced today. There is a list of uh, you know, certain uh venues that will have to participate in this. It will take a little while for this all to settle. We'll wait to see the regulation that comes out, wait to see how the health unit guidance is provided around this. But certainly with uh the September twenty-second date, you know, almost three weeks out, I think we'll have. Uh a lot of time to get the necessary details that we can make sure that our facilities, because I think our facilities may have to make. Some adjustments to uh to um. Uh adhere to this requirement, as well as, you know, a lot of the businesses in our community, so. Certainly over the next week or two, we'll be going through those regulations, making sure that we understand them. And answering any questions that are uh that are um businesses and residents have as well. So I think that's the uh the extent of it. Lots of news obviously breaking today, but certainly welcome any questions that people might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Durrell, and uh so we'll look forward to an update with regards to our rec center, cultural center at our next meeting. With regards to how the passport uh vaccines vaccine passport will be rolled out, I understand. That's fantastic, I appreciate it. And I also want to thank, yes, of course, uh. Uh Sean Barrio and Dave Brissette and all the staff at our at our rec center. And of course, a big thank you to yous for being the guy to get this all done, so uh thank you very much to Mr. Barrio. Mr. uh Brissette, all the staff at the rec center, all the staff in Midland, where it's been a tough year and a half, and especially uh Mr. Durrell, thank you very much, sir. Uh councillor Gordon, you had a question?
Yeah, just backing up on that, I got one of my two stabs at the rec center, and it was such a well-oiled machine. Uh there were, you know, friendly faces everywhere. It was just. It was just really well done, so absolutely kudos. I think I've said that before, but it's worth repeating. Um they did a great job. I'm glad, Mr. Durrell, you talked about the the health unit, because, I mean. I'm no, people don't call me as much about speeding lately as they do about COVID and vaccines and the town stance. I've had some really good sidebar dialogues with councillor Ocheski. And uh other folks about, you know, what's it gonna look like in the town of Midland? Uh the federal government's, you know, mandated uh vaccine for their employees. The province has been mandated vaccines for employees. You know, we're downstream as low as you get to the grassroots uh government, you know, or are we just gonna inherit these things? Or are they gonna leave us to flounder and make our own decisions and and, you know, get judged accordingly? So today, you know, like reading my news, you know, over my coffee, I see a Midland Today article about the town. Well, actually, all four municipalities stating that nobody in North Simcoe is taking uh any stance whatsoever on restricting their employees and vaccination. And, you know, I'm not so concerned about the quotes from other municipalities, but ours, you know, uh Mr. Fee is quoted as saying, we're currently watching the policies that are being developed. And any recommendations that come from the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, this time there are no mandatory vaccination policies in place, which is great. And then later in the afternoon, I'm scrolling my feed again, and I see Gartner's letter, Dr. Gartner's letter, from the very same health unit. Uh sending this letter, which I'm not gonna quote here, to businesses and organizations and presumably us, uh about the changes that were announced today. For September sixth, where he, I quote here, employers are required to maintain a safe work environment for their workers. Uh he stated, Dr. Gartner news release from the health unit, a COVID nineteen vaccination policy will help safeguard the work environment for employees and clients. And will help us to achieve higher overall vaccination in the population, so. If we were waiting for a proverbial shoe to drop from the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, I would argue it just landed in our nose. And uh it's pretty clear the health unit is, you know, their direction, so. Not that I'm uh arguing one way or the other on this. I chose to, you know, get my my vaccines and I encourage other people to. Um but the discussion is going to come to this table sooner than later about what we do with our municipal employees. Um if we can accommodate them with remote work, you know, if. As being suggested, some people are going off on leave, and I'm I'm reading like major employers are saying if. You go on leave for a short period of time, and if not, you're dis- you're dismissed with cause, no less, with cause, which means no severance. And then all kinds of litigation that follows. It's just a, it's gonna be very expensive for our municipality, and I'm I'm hoping that. I know you're all over this, but it's just weird on the same day, we get these two sort of conflicting messages in the news. Um impacting our municipality and the litany of emails and text messages and Facebook conversations that we're all, many of us are engaged in about. The safety of our community, the urging people to take the vaccine. Understanding freedom of choice and the civil liberties and all the other arguments that go into this. Not to mention then there's the fringe, right, that I won't even talk about right now, but. You've got your work cut out for you, and at some point, it's gonna come to this council, and it's gonna be one heck of a debate. So probably the sooner we get this um uh direction from the the higher up municipality, or if it's the county or the province, the better. For all of us down here in the weeds. My second quick comment was about the enforcement of this, you know, I I know it's brand new and you can't answer this, but I'm kind of asking it rhetorically. Enforcement of this new app that we're gonna have to carry, or the the, you know, people are gonna Photoshop their own vaccine IDs so they can go eat inside. There's no way to check for a while. Are people gonna be calling like Jim and our bylaw officers, uh you know, to enforce somebody who's being belligerent, wants to go in and inside and have a beer with their. Obviously Photoshop fake vaccine pass? Or are they calling the OPP, or is it some combination thereof? And what kind of, you know, backup are we gonna get from the province to try and enforce this? Nights and weekends too, right, when bars and stuff are busy?
Well, I I I watched for an announcement today, and he, his, a reporter asked him that same question. He said, phone the police. That was his comment from our premier, so I'll let Mr. Durrell if he has anything else to add.
Yeah, I think uh two comments on on your first uh comment on, you know, the the two news items, I mean. W- we were asked about our our policy a number of days ago, and we provided uh. You know, an accurate assessment of that. The Dr. Gardner news broke today, so. When they publish, you know, when the news is published, I don't, I don't, I can't control that, so, you know, they they lined up on the same day as. I guess uh gratuitous from from some aspects, I guess. Um but we always have, and you know, I I give a lot of credit for to Dr. Gardner and Dr. Rebala, and we have a very, very active conversation with them. And and we've, we've been discussing for some time. The need, because we're seeing so many municipalities come up with different vaccination policies, some leading, some others, some have the resources to do it. But certainly for communities of our size, we were saying, listen, we need the health unit to take a lead on this. We need to get some guidance. On what we can and cannot do, and uh we're looking for some help from the health unit on that, and they responded. So very glad to see that. We'll have a discussion as we normally do uh tomorrow with Dr. Gardner, so I'm. I'm sure we'll be going through a lot of the details on this and some other things, but he's always asking for input from us on on uh. Things, and again, this is just another signal to me that, you know, they're listening and helping and trying to help us, so that was great to see. Um you know, the other question of the enforcement, I'm sure there'll be people who call us to, I mean, they, you know. I think you 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 said, this is where the kind of rubber hits the road, right? All the calls kinda, this is the last line of defense, so. We get called for everything, so I'm sure we'll get called to enforce this to some point. What is the appropriate way to enforce this? I think that's one of those details that we're gonna have to work out. You know, we had um. You know, we, there were some very sensitive situations we had to deal with with enforcing, you know, personal care services, no question. We don't get to pick what we we are allowed to enforce, you know, we're given those laws, those regulations come down from the province and. You know, unfortunately, we have to do that, and we try and do that on a complaint basis, because that's where, that's the, that's the resources that we have. I don't know how this one will be managed. We'll have to look at the details of what's required for this. Um and see what those impacts will be, but, you know, bylaw and policing in in our town work very well together. Jim. Has a great relationship with um, you know, Inspector Evans and his team, so I'm sure we'll be able to work it out and figure out how to how to best. Support our businesses and our residents.
Any other questions or comments, councillor Meen?
Uh thank you, yeah. It feels like we're playing snakes and ladders. Right when you think you're about to get to the hundred square, you slide back down to the bottom. Uh and the fourth weight is, fourth wave has really been hard for people, because uh no one's been able to have a break, so. There were a lot of burnout in the healthcare uh sector, so uh the Delta variant apparently is as uh as transmissible as measles. Uh measles requires almost ninety-five percent uh vaccination to hit herd immunity, and we saw even pre-pandemic. Uh measles outbreaks in areas where vaccination had been declining, and so really, the best thing that we can do is try to encourage everybody to get vaccinated. Um but I really wanted to follow up with the, on the uh sanitary sewer surveillance. And what kind of conclusions that we saw out of it, because I think one very huge conclusion is that. It it didn't go away all last summer, and it was prevalent and present, even though we weren't having active cases showing up. I think it was still showing up. In our sanitary uh sewer. Is there any other conclusions or analysis that we've been able to draw from that uh monitoring program? I think it's just fascinating. It's incredibly interesting science.
Yeah, I'll let I'll let um Andy comment on that. That's certainly uh both Andy and Andres' area of expertise.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Uh through you, Mr. Chair. It it's, it's, you know, when when they started sampling, I. Doubt that they would actually find anything because of the dilution, but they concentrate uh the sampling in the laboratories and do their magic. And uh the amazing thing is, they found COVID in our wastewater, and they found it prior to people going into the hospitals. Which means the, it works, and not only in our municipality, but uh in other municipalities across Ontario. The science is working and for the the testing. If you look at the results uh for the last month, we've, we're basically. Now, I won't say zero, but almost zero uh indicators in our wastewater, which is good news. Uh if you look in the springtime, uh clearly, oh, we were seeing hits uh ten days in advance of the hospital. So uh I hope our our uh results stay as they are, but as people start to go indoors and with the Delta variant. Um we'll see more. I I think the good news is, when we started testing. The government and the health unit weren't cor- using the correlations that we were seeing and doing the correlations ourself at the town. Now, the health unit is publishing publishing that correlation. Uh so that that can help them in in predicting what might happen next week or or the week after. And I think that's what I'm really happy about, that uh that's, that science is being used as part of the analysis today. In in the consideration of of what the future might look like, where six months ago, eight months ago, we had data. But it was just data, so I'm I'm really pleased how the health unit and the province is uh using the science in a positive way today.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Uh Mr. Durrell, you had something to add?
Yeah, just the last comment I'll make, and it comes from Dr. Moore, who is the chief medical officer from Ontario. There is one point here he made. August twenty-fourth at a media conference, because I think we all know that even though you, if you are fully vaccinated, it's not a hundred percent. Uh, you know, a hundred percent um guarantee that you won't get it, although. Uh if you do get it, it's probably the symptom, it won't be nearly as as bad as someone who is unvaccinated. But but his quote was that an unvaccinated individual is eight times more likely to catch COVID. Eight times more likely to catch COVID, twenty-nine more times, twenty-nine times more likely to be in a hospital. And forty-eight times more likely to be a patient in intensive care. You know, versus someone who is vaccinated. So I think that's, that's pretty um. You know, illustrative of the importance of being vaccinated, although it is not a guarantee. It uh I think will do go far away to keep you out of intensive care and certainly suffering, like a lot of these people may, maybe uh. Who are unfortunately getting it. So I'll leave it with that unless there are any other comments.
I I believe councillor Ocheski had a comment or a question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much uh to the CEO for the presentation. I just want to say thank you for uh having to do with this and uh. Deal with this topic. It's a very sensitive and polarizing topic right now, and I agree with you that it shouldn't be a town of Midland decision. I hope it never comes to this table, personally. Um I hope that the county or the province or somebody steps up. If this is the solution, please. Um Dr. Moore and uh our premier, please step up, and if this is the solution, then mandate it. I don't think uh. Small town of Midland councillors should be making um these health decisions for the employees and the employees that are sitting and waiting on this. Uh having sleepless nights, wondering um if this is gonna be mandated and you could be forced out of your job, just. You know, everything's gonna work out in the end, and everything happens for a reason, and it's it's tough for all of us right now. Uh it's a very polarizing topic, as I said, but thank you so much to our staff, thank you so much to the team that are dealing with this. Thank you to everybody in Ontario who is uh professional and giving their best advice to everybody and everybody who's following that advice. Um. Thank you to everybody who's doing their best.
Thank you councillor Ocheski, well said. Uh any other questions, comments? I see none. Uh we'll take this as information, and we'll move on to next event, uh next item. Thank you, uh Mr. Durrell, greatly appreciated. Uh next up, we have a notice of motion. Any notice of motion bringing forward this evening? Councillor Ocheski, I'm sorry, councillor Post and councillor Cunningham, councillor Cunningham, please?
Yes, thank you. Um I have a notice of motion that I want to bring, but I'd also like to see if we could get that two-thirds vote to deal with it this evening for a couple of reasons. Uh prime one being, there's no reason to delay. And the second one being, Mr. Reicheld is here this evening, and we have him to speak on it, and he won't be here in two weeks. So the motion that I am bringing forward is that effective immediately, all drivers holding an accessible parking permit be allowed free parking. In any paid parking spots on streets and in lots in Midland. Um I think uh Mr. Mayor was willing to second that, but I guess he could help me with that.
I think we need to, um Adam Clerk, if you could structure this, I believe we did a two-third vote to get that on the table, which would be uh. Six out of eight of us tonight. Uh how how would we proceed?
Um council would have to vote on whether you want to um suspend the rules. And if we do get, if you get a two-thirds vote, then we can proceed with the motion, so the.
Do we need a mover and a seconder to suspend the rules, or it's just a simple vote?
A mover and a seconder.
Wonderful. So I need a mover or a seconder to bring this forward, and I'll go to councillor Cunningham. I'm sorry, councillor Downer first, but I'll have a move by uh. Councillor Ocheski, second by councillor Post, that we suspend the rules and bring this forward tonight, councillor Downer?
Yes, uh I'd like to remove myself from this topic, as I am a holder of a of a uh disabled certificate. I don't feel, I don't feel that I should be worrying on this.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? I'm going to uh, not support this. Not, no reason that uh, I don't think there's a rush. I think we have a process in, in uh, in place that we need to follow. Uh, two weeks from now, I'd love to hear from the public. It's on the agenda and uh, I don't, I don't see a rush, so I won't be supporting this, but uh, I'll leave it to anybody else who has a comment with regards. I support the motion wholeheartedly, but I believe we need to follow the rules of our council that has laid out. There's no reason to uh, to uh, rush this through, but um, that's my opinion. But uh, any other question or comments? Counselor Cunningham?
Just to speak to the reason to move it forward quicker, um, we know that there are some challenges with the parking, with the system, with the implementation of it. And when we see something come up that is easily solvable and quickly solvable, I had a great meeting with, with Angela and Jim and Ms. Grenier and Mr. Reicheld this past week about this issue and how simple it would be to make this movement forward, to show that we are paying attention, that we hear what's going on. Um, am I speaking out of turn, Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to point out that as per our procedure bylaw, the motion is on the floor to suspend the rules.
Right, we're only discussing-
So it's not debatable. You just have to vote and you have the discussion once you-
My apologies.
Two-thirds vote. That's okay.
I'm, my mistake. Okay. So those in favor of bringing this forward this evening, uh, please hold up your card. I see one, two, three, four. Uh, that will not be enough to get it, uh, five. It will, we need uh, what's two-thirds of uh, seven would be five? And I don't see five. If we could hold your cards up again? One, two, three, four. Oh, we do have five. All right. So we'll go ahead with the discussion. Uh, that we will move, move this item forward. Uh, Counselor Cunningham, you need a mover and a seconder with regards to your motion. You're moving it. I need a seconder, it would be Counselor Chesky to get the side of them on the floor. Uh, would you like to read your motion again, please?
Certainly. It's short and sweet. I move that effective immediately or tomorrow morning, according to Mr. Reicheld. All drivers holding an accessible parking permit be allowed free parking in any paid parking spots on streets and in lots in the town of Midland.
Apologize. Any questions or comments with regards to Mr. Reicheld? You care to add a few points before we move forward?
If I could speak to my motion as well, that would be great.
Yes. You'd like to go first, please, Madam Chair? I mean, uh, uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, so we, I've certainly been spending some time downtown, talking with merchants and, and walking along the streets and just paying attention, hanging out in parking lots and seeing how people are doing with the new parking system. And of course, change is hard. We know that. It's always uh, challenging. But what I did notice was with the number of um, payment units we have in our downtown, there's quite a few, and yet there's quite a long distance from many, many of the parking spots that are not handicap parking spots, but are um, just parking spots, right? To, if you're on First Street and you're going to hobble into the chiropractor, which I did last week, I realized I had to walk all the way down to the parking pay, back up to figure out which vehicle I was driving, what license plate it was, back again to pay. Um, and yes, I could have used the app, but it crashed on me three times. So, you know, I, I'm pretty tacky. And then back up to the chiropractor again. And so it occurred to me at that point in time that it has nothing to do with ability to put money, have the money to put into parking. It has to do with how difficult it is to actually do that uh, walking back and forth. And it seems unnecessarily difficult for our people who have accessible parking permits, that they would need to do that on our streets or in our lots.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. Uh, Mr. Reicheld, you have anything to share? If you could?
Uh, thank you. Um, not, really, uh, I, I have no problem with this. Uh, go, go ahead, David.
Sorry, Mr. Reicheld, sorry, under the spot there. I apologize.
Right through you, Deputy uh, Mayor. And, and I certainly understand the sentiment behind this. And I can, I can speak with some um, some experience on this topic. I was responsible for accessible permits for the, for the province. So I understand some of the uh, the issues with them. Um, and, and I'd offer some caution in, in approaching this and thinking this might be as simple as, as we think. There might be some unintended consequences as a result of doing this, which may impact the very people you're trying to help. Um, when you, when you make these type of adjustments that allow people to get free access to something with the use of an accessible permit, you create, and this is a term that's used in some other jurisdictions, a golden ticket. And then, and when you create that golden ticket, you get a lot of people who come out of the woodwork and create um, fraudulent um, permits, who will reuse permits of other people, um, who will take advantage of the situation and start to populate the spaces that are needed by the very people who actually need them. So, don't be surprised if you see the number of accessible permits potentially increase, because that's happened in other jurisdictions. And as a result, you may be impacting the people who actually need it. That has happened. So I just wanted to share those, that information. The other thing that, that has happened and you can, you can Google this and you can see a number of people where this vigilante-type enforcement starts to occur because people are thinking people are gaming the system. When in fact, there are many people who have these permits because of disabilities that aren't visible. So they will start confronting people because they're getting out of their car and walking over to, you know, Dino's to pick up their, and they're challenging them on their, their use of an accessible permit. Because it's giving them something free. So, you know, those are a couple of things that I've certainly seen. I think it'd be very hard to change it if, if you pass it. If the issue is making it easier for people with accessible permits to get access to the, the terminals, maybe we need more accessible parking spots. We've got forty spaces downtown today for accessible needs. I think that's quite a lot for that uh, number of spaces. We've got sixty-nine terminals, you know, spread out in that area. Again, I think that's a fair number. Hopefully it's um, but if we need to reconsider the number of spots with the number of terminals, I think that may be another way to make it more convenient for some of these uh, people. But I just wanted to offer that perspective on what maybe viewed as something easy could have these unintended consequences and in fact be resulting in uh, you know, something that is very hard to enforce. And uh, some people may try to game the system.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Dino. I am a little concerned myself with regards to uh, accessible parking. Is there a time limit we're gonna implement? Uh, if I work at uh, the bank, I can, if I have an accessible park, I can park all day and leave it there for eight, nine hours and not have a permit. I'm, I'm just concerned just by saying that media, effective media, all drivers holding an accessible parking permit is allowed to park for free in any spot. It, do we register at the app? Uh, uh, sorry, register through the app and you get that free parking because you are accessible and it's on your license or I'm just a little concerned how, how we enforce it. But um, those are just a few questions I have. Um, any other questions or comments? I see Mr. Reicheld does have his hand up. Is that uh, Mr. Reicheld?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I can answer that point regarding the enforcement. Uh, time limit restrictions should still apply. Um, it would be enforced as our dis, or I'm sorry, our uh, veteran plate program is um, essentially uh, holders of these permits, if, if this is the way we go, would just be ignored. Uh, however, the time limit, so the two-hour on King Street, on street would apply and the eight-hour in our lots would apply. Um, they would not need to register at the machine.
Thank you very much. As for my question, Mayor Strathern? And then Counselor Gordon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, when I first looked at this, I thought, oh, this is fairly benign. Um, it's, seems like a reasonable thing to do. I mean, at one point I'd suggested that we take all of the parking spaces on King Street and paint them blue. We've got access across the entire main street. And I got realizing, well, that's, that's now not fair to patrons of Dino's or whoever's coming around doing pickup. Um, I have seen in people that I know abuse those um, accessible permits, accessibility permits quite often. And it's quite disturbing. And I have seen people come out and to, as Mr. Genova said, and get pretty abusive with people that they know darn well don't have the permit. And it then migrates over to other people, so as he put it, vigilante. Um, we, we, and the thing that strikes me also is that and, and, and Counselor Cunningham actually pointed this out quite eloquently just a moment ago. We have problems with the parking system. We I see people coming in here. Every, every day I'm in this office, I see them coming in to pay their parking tickets. And some of them just say, oh, well, you know, I goofed up and other people are really annoyed. Because they haven't figured out how to run that system. I personally had to get the assistance of one of the bylaw people to tell me whether my car was actually in, in the system and I had a free hour or not. But that's a problem with the system. That is, the municipality is working very hard to correct. There's been lots of suggestions, both from merchants and other people uh, in terms of how to do that. And I think that if you're going to look at the parking system, then you should look at it holistically. One of the big issues I hear, for example, from merchants is it's gonna cost my employee two thousand dollars a year to park because I can't get a permit designated for the year for my employee, for my employee again. So there was, you know, we relied on numbers, I believe, that came from the B I A or through consultation with the B I A, and it's proved to be woefully adequate. I've heard comments like, well, the parking areas are not nearly as full as they used to be. And yet I see people who are employees of downtown who just moved back to where they're no longer being charged. And hence, your parking lot's nowhere near as full. So to me, that if you're gonna deal with a matter around parking, then deal with it in a matter that addresses it holistically, just giving, uh, well, I'd like to say, well, because you're, you have a um, a mobility challenge. Um, well, we, we'll just forgive it. And Mr. Reicheld brought up uh, an example where we've done it for veterans. Uh, but I would say to Mr. Reicheld, I don't know how you enforce time if they're not registered in the system. Um, so there's, there's a, there's a deviation and uh, there's a problem, I think, in the logic around that. If I don't register my plate in the system, how do I know he's been, uh, how do you know that I've been there two hours or two and a half hours or whatever? Now, then I guess you go by and you ping every plate and maybe you pick up on that. I come back to the point that I think if we're going to deal with this, I, first of all, I would like to see this parking uh, process dealt with very quickly. Um, so that our citizens ha- have a uh, an assurance that they're going to uh, be able to consent with these machines. I think that, you know, there for some people, first of all, we need to identify that it's a paid, pays you a lot. Now it's not for free. Why is it that way? What are we intending to achieve with that? And I had a great conversation with Mr. Dino uh, earlier in the day, and we agree that you know, perhaps we should be, you know, putting out there, why are we doing this? And I'll leave that to the um, senior leadership team to put that together. But as far as this motion goes, I like the idea that we would be able to do something for people who have mobility channel. I frankly, I've got a bad knee and it kicks out once in a while. But I don't, I don't feel it's necessary for me to have a accommodation. So I, 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 but I, I know people who do have to use a um, uh, I call it a Zimmer frame, but a walker. And what I don't think people realize is that if you, if you're in a designated accessible spot, it's a, it's, it's much wider than a normal spot, regular parking spot. So if you go into a regular parking spot, you have to use, I'll call it a Zimmer frame, walker. Um, chances are, two people come to park beside you, chances are you're not getting your car until they come back. Because uh, and I, I know that my neighbor would, would, was, who has issues uh, as mobility, sure as heck wouldn't be able to. He just wouldn't be able to um, maneuver. So I, I, while I appreciate that, I mean, I voted for uh, bringing this forward. I think the conversation needs to be had. We're having it. But I do believe that um, it should be looked at viewed at uh, in a more um, broader understanding of what's going on with parking in town. Thank you.
I have Counselor Gordon and Counselor Post. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure that uh, our C O didn't mean to come across the way I felt that he did, but the uh, you know, characterizing a vast number of people as going to be abusing this system and photoshopping and making their own things. Well, I'm sure that will happen and it certainly does happen in economy of scale and larger municipalities. I think characterizing people with genuine disabilities, even if they're not, they don't appear to be disabilities to you and I. Uh, you know, when they get out of their car and they see an able-bodied, like, hey, what's that guy doing there? You don't know what that disability is all about. And I don't think that um, vilifying them and saying that, you know, if we do this, we're opening ourselves up to rampant fraud and abuse. I mean, that's the way I heard it anyway. I mean, you, you weren't terrible about it, but I think it maybe could have been read or, you know, heard differently, or maybe certainly said differently. And please, I'll get you respond to it. This, my concern is that we already, we already do this for um, for veterans. And uh, you know, our veterans, some of them are disabled um, from serving. Some of them got disabled after service. And our veterans park for free and somehow we pull this off without the system falling apart. And uh, Jim and his team have been doing this for quite a long time. I think we can do this for the, until we figure out our parking um, issue. Cause I'll tell you, I've taken a real beating online, trying to defend the parking issue and the, the money that it's supposed to be bringing in, um, you know, to help us offset the tax burden. And defending the whole fee-for-service concept. And I'm still waiting, Mr. C O, for those fee-for-service plans. Hopefully we see that in the, in the budget to try and make people accountable that they pay for, they pay when they play, right? That the rest of us don't have to pick the tab up for them deciding to to use services in the municipality, unless they're greater good ones like our transit or library. But, but to characterize the uh, you know, the the abuse of the system as a reason not to do it when we already have a method that seems to work fine with the I, I don't, that to me, that's not enough, good enough reason to, to say no to, to free parking right now. I think there's a lot about our first kick of the can with parking that have rubbed people the wrong way. Some of it's maybe our way of implementing it. The timing, it was, you know, the worst timing, I think we could have done it. Uh, our need for the money, the way we have articulated it, maybe the way we rolled it out, even with our changes that we made, you know, with the free hour and the couple hours in the backlots. There's enough animosity around this that it's deserving of a rethink. And I've committed that we need to do that. If not this year, early spring, when it's been played in place for a while, we got some evidence and some, you know, idea of what it's making us. Um, I just, I don't think that uh, the concerns that you articulated, Mr. C O, are enough to compel me not to support this motion right now. So I will be supporting it tonight unless I hear some, something compelling otherwise. And I'll give you a chance to to correct in, you know, the way I heard this.
Mr. C O, you have a comment? You're, you're muted, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor uh, Gordon. I'm not trying to compel anyone in council to, to go in one direction or the other. I'm sharing with you some facts about an accessible parking permit that I was responsible for, for the province. And so those facts are, those jurisdictions that have implemented this uh, type of free system for these permits did see abuse, not by people who were disabled. So let me be very clear on that. It was by people who wanted to game it to get free access to parking spots. And these are in large jurisdictions and small jurisdictions, wherever it was. This was also, as, as the mayor indicated, people within families who may have been using a permit by somebody else. The end result was the disabled people who needed the spot did not get access to the spot. That is the fact I'm trying to make you aware of. So there is that risk. You may be impacting the very people you are trying to help by making this change. I hope that's clear. In terms of uh, you know, the other comments about the parking system, I, you know, we had a couple of deputations tonight. We've had various conversations. We had a very vigorous debate during budget about zero percent. And one of the few tools that we have in this town to allow people outside of this town to help pay for- And one of the few tools that we have in this town to allow people outside of this town to help pay for infrastructure is a user-based parking system. That is one of the very few tools we have that's left available to us. And every time we keep making changes that, that don't, doesn't allow that to happen, we impact the potential revenue and the potential levy, levy that would have to make up that lost ground. So that's one of the reasons why it was in the budget and provided almost 2% of relief. You know, in, in the forecast. Will that happen because of COVID? Will that happen because of the free hour? Will that happen because of potentially another motion here? The numbers will, will fluctuate and we'll have to adjust the budget accordingly. But there is no question that this was put in place to try and relieve the burden off our residents who, you know, as we've heard, are paying too much in tax and allow people outside of Midland to participate more. This is just the start of this program. And the feedback that we're receiving is consistent with every jurisdiction that has implemented this program. If you look at the other cities, this is not a new system. The system's been in place for, for quite some time. Has been implemented in other, in other areas. And they will tell us the same thing. We've heard the same feedback when we implemented it. You need to let it settle in and get people comfortable with the app. With understanding how to use the technology to understand, you don't have to return to your car with a slip. You can do it from the app as long as the app is stable. And you can, you know, top up if you're using a smartphone. So I think there is a settling in period that needs to happen. But I think there is also, to the, to the mayor's point, there's a next phase of this. Our hope is we can relieve even more burden from our residents by using events where, you know, people from outside the, the town come in and maybe use the parking system to help relieve that burden. So there's, there's certainly, I think, a lot of benefits that can be uh, as a result of this type of system that can help relieve the burden on the residents. It is not intended to, to add, you know, take more money out of their pockets. That is not the intent at all. We are a town that has a financial need. And this is one of the very few tools at our disposal to help uh, service those needs and have others outside of Midland participation.
Thank you, Mr. Dino. Councillor Post?
Um, I support this motion because I've got a lot of phone calls about, um, accessible parking. There, in some cases, it's too far for them to go. And when snow comes, it'll be even harder to be able to get to the meter to pay. So unless there's, there's a meter for them within a few feet of, of their parking spot, um, I think free parking is okay in this case. And as far as fraud, we're going to get it no matter what. I don't know if we should not do good things because, you know, there, there's going to be bad people out there trying to get away with it. I'm sure there's a way of catching them, checking to see if that, um, accessible ticket has a number on it. I'm sure it does. That can be checked. Does it belong to that car? So I just, I think there are other ways, and I don't think that we would be losing that much revenue. Um, unless we want to put in parking meters within a few feet of each accessible parking, unless they're right beside each other. But I mean, something reasonable. That's
There are, there are no meters. And the fact is, uh, with the new technology, we don't need meters. You just
No, but I'm referring, but I'm referring to the new meters. Because even on Midland, you know what I mean, the pay things?
Yep. I get, I get it. I get it.
Okay. So on Midland Avenue in front of, um, the beauty shop up the street, there's wheelchair accessible parking. They have to walk too far, too far and find the, where to pay for that. So I don't know if they got a ticket or not. I haven't heard back yet.
I think, I think what the CEO and I, I, I could agree, could not agree more is that we need to communicate that, that you don't even have to walk to that, that unit.
I know, but not everybody can do it on their phone.
And I just, and I'm not going to get an argument back and forth with you, but that's a, I just came from Toronto. If you don't have a smartphone and you, you can't go to a restaurant, you would need to fill out the screening, you need, you can't park, you can't do anything without a smartphone. And I, I completely understand that not everyone has them and you, some do have to pay, but the world is changing and I would, you know, it, it, it will ha, it will happen eventually. You're going to need, the, the province even said today that your, your, uh, your passport for your vaccine will be on your smartphone. There's no other place it's going to be, but on that smartphone. So yes, I, I hear your comment. I, I completely understand, but I would hope to think that, you know, we're going through a bit of growing pains with this new parking system, but I would like to see it settle in a bit. But point taken. Thank you, councillor Post. And I, I understand your, your reasoning. Now I am concerned, do we take, now that we're offering free parking for, do we take away those, all those accessible parking? Do we even need it if you can just park anywhere? I'm, I'm just concerned how that would, how that would play out because we're not, now we're going to have accessible parking plus because that's free and then free parking. I'm just, you know, what, what's going to happen when, uh, somebody without a permit parks in the, anyway, I, I'm talking about, I apologize. Uh, anybody else with questions or comments? Councillor Post, I mean councillor Cunningham?
Councillor Maine was actually before me. Yes.
Councillor Maine, then councillor Cunningham.
Okay. Um, so just want to reiterate, we're not talking about adding spots or people being able to take accessible parking spots away. We're just talking about people who do have accessible parking permits, being able to park where they need to and not have to go pay. Uh, I did have a good talk with Mr. Reichelt about the app and how it crashes and does not save your license plate number. It does not save your credit card number. It does not use Apple Pay. There are options that we could look at, not right now, because we haven't fully implemented the system that could legitimately allow people to go from their car to the place that they want to go into a business, a different app that is better. It is, it has a better user interface. It's more stable and will save things. As long as they have figured out what zone they're in or the place of business knows what zone they parked in. The app does not work that way. Uh, the app is not user-friendly. And in fact, I feel when I'm standing at parking meters with people trying to help them pay, um, I don't know if you're a gamer, anybody's a gamer that's heard of the Konami code and it's up, up, down, down, left, right, left, right, right, V A, enter. It's green and a yellow license plate, green, green. Go. You've got your free hour. That clarity is such a relief to people because it is a pain in the neck. And that's at the pay station. The app is harder to use currently. And it isn't something that's being ignored. And Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. We need a holistic view as well. I think this is a short-term win that says, and we can take steps while not saying we won't do the holistic view. I think that's it.
Councillor Maine?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to comment that perhaps, um, this item could be referred to the accessibility committee. Uh, because I, I, I think I always love deferring to the accessibility committee, especially getting boots on the ground, wheels on the ground and going or walking around the downtown, uh, reviewing, assessing the accessible parking. Does it work with the new terminals, that type of thing? And having their input, uh, we have a great committee, uh, very dedicated. Uh, perhaps they would love to provide some commentary on this. Um, cause they are, are subject matter experts as, uh, uh, just as a comment, or just a suggestion.
So I'm at, you have a deferral on the table? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I guess it was a referral, but I guess a referral is a deferral, but, um, I just wanted to make that comment that, uh, certainly the accessibility committee should have some comments on this.
So are, are you putting deferral on the table? Is that what the question I'm asking?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. Just to add on, last time I used the app, there was a 30% convenience fee for using the app. I don't know if that's still a thing, but 30%, I know that's, if you use the app, you pay an extra 30%. 30 cents on your dollar. For it's a convenience fee. If you walk up to the machine and you drop your buck in it, there's no 30 cent fee. So just FYI. I don't know if you guys have experienced that or if it just jammed me, but, um, I'd like to just quote something, just to kind of bring us all focused here. I, I do agree, the accessibility committee, uh, for us to make this decision without input from them, I think we'd be kind of, uh, you know, undermining them, cutting them off at the knees. I don't know if that's inappropriate with the accessibility committee, but uh, I definitely think we need to hear from them, but you pull up the, uh, 2014, 2015 accessibility plan and multi-year plan update off of our website. And the executive summary, I'm just going to take a second to read you what we're broadcasting to the world we stand for. The town of Midland is committed to ensuring that the goods and services it provides and makes available to its residents and visitors are second to none and accessible to all. Over the years and before mandated by the province to do so, the town has maintained a proactive approach to addressing barriers to its buildings, facilities, programs, practices and services by implementing positive changes geared towards improved accessibility. The provincial government's enactment of the Ontario with Disabilities Act 2001 brought the importance of accessibility to the forefront. The goal of this legislation is to improve opportunities for people with disabilities and to provide for their involvement in the identification, removal and prevention of barriers to their full participation in life of the province. So I'm not suggesting that by us, you know, jamming them for parking that we're going against our very own statement, but I'd like to remind everyone that that's what this is about. And that, you know, we only have a few, uh, spots like this identified in the community. And that, you know, it's for the cost of a can of paint. Because we maybe didn't put it, our, uh, our pay stations close enough to those spots. We can either remove the spots. It's probably easier than, cheaper than moving the electrical for the, for the pay station, but we, we can look at rejigging things and making this more easy for folks to use. And, uh, I definitely think that, uh, this motion is, it makes sense. And believe me, I've had some, there's a couple of folks that have disabilities that follow me on Facebook. And one of them is like the most just negative guy in the world, like, and he's comes by some of his negativity, honestly, with some of his experiences, but they, a couple of them anyway, have been at, at me specifically about this very motion. And I'm, I've, I've struggled to defend why it shouldn't be other than the money argument. And I just feel cheap and petty, you know, making it about the money. So I'm glad councillor Cunningham, you brought this up tonight. And I do support it, but I, I also would support it being referred to the, uh, accessibility committee. Not so that it can die a painful death and never come back to see us again, but only to get their input. And maybe they can better it and provide some, some input that might help those that are reluctant to support this tonight here and now, support it, uh, when it comes back to us. So if we put some time constraints on it, like whenever their next meeting was, and then how to come back to us. So this isn't a deferral to oblivion, which I absolutely hate the most, you know, in politics. I'd love, I'd be happy either way, but you know, I'm in your hands. This is your motion. I'm prepared to support it right now too.
So, uh, councillor Maine?
I, I was with, uh, it sounds like there's interest to, uh, defer to the accessibility committee. Uh, I'll draft the motion, uh, I'll, uh, put forward a motion to, uh, defer the, this motion until, uh, review and comment from the accessibility committee. Is that, uh?
We have deferral on the floor. You need a second or? Someone like the second councillor, uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern. Uh, all those in favor of deferral? One, two, three, four, four to seven, that moves to defer. Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, move on to the next item, which would be councillor Post.
There's eight of us.
Sorry. Councillor, uh, Downer was not voting. Please note that councillor Downer did not vote in this. Um, yeah, sorry councillor Chesky. Um, so next item, we have a notice of motion from councillor Post. Councillor Post, you have a notice of motion bring forward?
I do. Um, I believe the clerk has it. Um, I'm having trouble bringing it up.
I believe I even have it. So I will just read it if that's fine, then we'll discuss it at the next meeting. I just wanted to give you the opportunity if you wanted to read it, but
Well, thanks, because I can't pull it up on my phone right now.
No problem. Councillor, uh, sorry. To present a motion at the next council meeting proposing that for safety reason, parking on the road be, sorry, parking on the road be permitted on the sidewalk side only on Cook Drive. Uh, we can work with the notice, but is that your notice in general? Wonderful. Uh, so that is a notice of motion that will come forward for a vote at the next council meeting. Uh, you have a notice of motion also councillor Gordon?
I do.
Okay, please.
That staff provide a plan that allows for the installation of ribbons and other public awareness measures in our downtown court.
Thank you very much councillor Gordon.
That'll all forwarded by, by writing so that it's on our next agenda.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councillor, uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern?
Uh, thank, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, uh, first to, uh, I don't have a notice of motion, but first to councillor Gordon. Uh, staff are reviewing policy around, um, flag raisings and expressions of solidarity, et cetera. AKA the purple ribbon episode with the, um, your national flag raising awareness day. So I mean, feel free to bring it forward, but it is being considered already. It's not just being considered, it's being acted on. So just for your clarification.
Well, fair enough. Then if it's already, uh, you know, there's movement on this, that is what it's stemming from is the, you know, the failed attempt to get the ribbons installed, uh, for awareness day. So I'm happy to pull that one and I won't submit it as the written notice.
You have opportunity to talk to staff before the next meeting and we'll be sure, long as it's posted on agenda, we'll be happy to vote and have the conversation. Councillor Gordon, I don't see there's a reason to pull it. Uh, it might be worthwhile to have a quick conversation and move forward to make sure we get the wording exactly right.
All right, we'll continue on and submit it then.
Is that, all right.
Thank you.
And, and I just, Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to speak to councillor Post for a sec. Um, there's definitely, um, I've driven down Cook Drive and with parking on both sides, you know, I'm watching my mirror.
Sorry worship, I gotta have to cut you off. That is just a more, we're no discussion could happen on this. We gotta, you know, go for the next meeting. I apologize. I don't mean to cut you off. All right. Thank you. Um, next up, we have general announcements. Any announcements this evening? Mayor, uh, sorry, uh, councillor Cunningham?
Yes, it is September, which is not the whole announcement. That means we are rolling into 30 days of culture, which is an annual event that the town of Midland promotes that encourages you to get out for 15 minutes a day for the month of September and join the culture that you have around you. That might be dining. It might be actually cooking at home even, reading a book by a local author. It might be going to an attraction or it might be kayaking on the Y River with me on a Saturday morning. In conjunction with that, our cultural alliance is putting together our culture asset map. And John Todd has been instrumental in supporting us in putting together a virtual scavenger hunt. I like to call it geo-coaching. Each day on our Facebook page, you will find a clue. I saw the first clue today and I went, I'm going to have to Google that one because, oh my goodness, I have no idea. But each day on the Culture Alliance Facebook page is a clue. You go to the culture asset map and see if you've got it right. So if you think you've got the answer, you go find the pin, click on the pin. And if it has a little code that says, hey, you found us, you write that code into your tracking sheet. There are prizes. And there's just the fame and fortune of, of knowing your town inside out. Now, of course, you need to know five regions inside out because there is Midland, Penetanglashin, Tiny and Tate Townships, as well as Bozley First Nation clues that you will be racking your brain over from your coach. So I encourage you to do that. If you're stumped for what you could do to do 15 minutes of culture exploration each day for September. And post what you did. Tag us. Don't post if you found out the clue. No giving it away. This is important.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Councillor Gordon?
Well, I guess eating my morning yogurt doesn't count as any, a few minutes of culture. Dun dun. Okay, anyway, uh, stupid dad joke. Or grandfather joke, as I should say, as I just became one two days ago. Anyway, uh, I wanted to do a little plug for the firefighter recruitment program. I've shared it on my Facebook page. The town's got it. The application deadlines for this round is September 30th. If you have ever considered, uh, you know, putting on the bunker gear and cutting up cars and putting the white stuff on the red stuff, if you like the smell of burning couches, uh, you know, and, uh, house fires and whatever. That it, there's a rewarding career for either as a volunteer or, um, perhaps as a segue into a professional firefighter position. There's a lot of medical training. There's a lot of training. And it's a lot of fun. I, I did just about seven years in tiny township at station four in Ybridge. Met some fantastic people I'm still friends with to this day. Uh, put our lives on the line together, you know, it, that came through some close calls. It was super rewarding. All those, you know, midnight beeps can wake you up and you're just packing the car with the kids to go somewhere, beep, 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 and off you go. I'm, I'm not trying to make this sound like a downer. It really is a super rewarding career for any age. So if people have time that they can volunteer, uh, in the community, any one of our communities in North Simcoe, we're all hiring together. For any age, so if people have time that they can volunteer, uh, in the community, any one of our communities in North Simcoe, we're all hiring together. And looking for volunteer firefighters, and by the way, there is money in it, it's not truly volunteer. Um, but you're not, it's not, don't quit your day job, okay, so get a hold of the town of Midland, you'll see the website, drop by the fire hall, um, actually maybe not drop by the fire hall with COVID, but just get a hold of on the website, you'll see the town of Midland's uh, link to the joint fire recruitment and consider a, uh, a career in, in serving the community and in the fire capacity as a firefighter. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Gordon, councillor, mayor Strathern?
Thank you deputy mayor, I just like, uh, some people may have seen it in the media, but I'd just like to announce that inspector Joseph Evans is, is now the full-time permanent detachment commander for Southeast Northern Bay and I'd like to extend the welcome to inspector Evans, certainly appreciate his efforts, so when he was here as interim detachment commander. Made some significant changes for the power, for the better, uh, he certainly, he's been vetted through the, um, the OPP system, he was put through an interview by the five municipalities he'll be serving. Um, as, uh, as well as he's, uh, he's responsible for mostly some of the aspects of Bozley First Nation. And to, to, all the municipalities were very, uh, I, I, I think I can speak for them in saying, uh, they were very pleased to see inspector Evans, uh, get the posting, so welcome to Midland's inspector Evans, we're looking forward to even bigger and better and brighter things.
Thank you mayor Strathern, any other announcements? I, uh, councillor Maine?
Uh, just want to give a quick shout out to the downtown BIA and the town of Midland, there's two more, uh, Midland movie nights. Uh, next Wednesday and the twenty second, uh, please pre-register if you can, uh, with the poster. Uh, we've had pretty good numbers, uh, lots of room, everyone spaced out, it's very safe, uh, great movies and everyone's been having a good time, hopefully we'll see everyone out next Wednesday downtown, thank you.
Thank you councillor Maine, I, uh, I had a couple announcements if I could, uh, one, I'd like to just congratulate our main street and all the businesses in Midland. Uh, I know it's been a really tough, but our main street is rocking, there's some amazing new restaurants, uh, shops. Everything seems to be happening, I had the deputy mayor here from another municipality who, uh, came to Midland and he, uh, his comment was, I couldn't believe how cool Midland was, so it made me feel very good. And, uh, and I just wanted to give a shout out to all those new businesses and all the great existing businesses that are rocking our main street and the town of Midland. Uh, you're greatly appreciated and I encourage everyone to shop local. And secondly, I just want to remind all our residents that on Tuesday, our kids will be returning back to school, it's been a long time. And please be safe out there, watch for your school buses and, uh, obey the crossing at all your schools. And, uh, be safe out there and welcome the kids back to their school, I hope that, uh, it's a great year and they're able to, uh, continue with a full year in class, uh, I know my daughter is very, very excited to get back to school and, uh, see her friends and have, uh, some type of social life, so let's hope that, uh, everybody's safe out there come Tuesday with all the buses and kids walking around. Uh, just a friendly reminder, um, any other announcements? I see none, uh, so we go to our last motion for my agenda, it's moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Chesky, that the committee poll rise and report, all those in favor? So Carrie, your worship, it's all yours.
Thank you deputy mayor, still having trouble finding that mute button after all this time. I have a motion here by councillor Maine, seconded by councillor Downer. That the recommendation is of the committee of the whole for the meeting of September one, twenty twenty one, be adopted as resolutions of council. Uh, questions or comments with respect to the motion from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that carries. Next, uh, on our agenda. Is, uh, motions for which notice was given, I believe councillor Gordon has a motion he wishes to put forward.
Yes, that it, uh, the council authorized the installation of community safety surveillance cameras at the intersection of Base Street and First Street. So I'll throw that on the floor, look for a second or?
Uh, do we have a second for this? Councillor Pross, thank you.
So your worship and council, uh, you know, last meeting, we, uh, had, you know, some lively debate around, um, installation of the four-way stop signs at Bay and First, um, we, you know, went against staff's, uh, you know, recommendations, quite frankly, and guidance in doing so. Uh, along with that, you know, came some cautions about liability and, uh, you know, I, I also brought up concerns about the to-be-installed Rainbow Crosswalk and its propensity to become vandalized, which, uh, you know, I think is inevitable sadly, but, uh, it got me thinking, you know, why don't, this would be the perfect little spot, we already witnessed what a really good, you know, not relatively cheap camera can show us at that intersection and record to the cloud, it's like a very inexpensive thing, I put a couple of them in downtown to do the big dig and made them publicly available. So why wouldn't we do that as a municipality? I talked to, uh, Scott Campbell, uh, he's got a wonderful piece of roof there on top of his coffee shop that he'd, uh, be willing to allow us to use or put a bolt, a bolt on a, uh, you know, little piece of masting that we hang a couple of cameras on, I've caused this out, although it's not my job to do that, if this passes town, the staff will do it, but for under a thousand dollars, we can put a couple of cameras, one would be a peat, a pentile zoom one. So that it could be controlled and, you know, moved around and focused and zoomed, uh, if you wish. And the other one would be a, uh, non-pentile zoomer, they could both be the same, that would be a tight shot on the, on the crosswalk, that'll make sure we get license plates and good descriptors of vehicles or people using it. And those two cameras, uh, could talk easily on the internet, either through Mr Campbell's internet. We could put our own in or we could leverage the existing system the town has with the towers at the fire hall and the town hall. Uh, and we could get internet easily using, uh, just a point-to-point antenna connection. All of that off eBay for under a grand, we can have, uh, these two cameras recording, not made publicly available unless we chose to, and store the video for thirty days, so that helps abate some of our liability around um, the, you know, the concerns that were raised about stopping traffic in that intersection and allows us to keep an eye on our newly installed Pride Crosswalk. So I'm looking for council support for a, uh, you know, a low-cost, uh, low-hanging fruit solution to some of the concerns about liability expressed by staff, I think could set the stage for our future camera, uh, installations along the main street. It's been talked about for many years and the fact, I'll remind council that we supported the initiative to go, go for the grant money to adopt that program where people can dip into a pool of funds if we get it. I haven't heard back yet, uh, to purchase cameras, point them towards public areas and make that available to the police should they need it for investigating crime. So, that's the rationale behind this, I think it's a nice cheap initiative that'll satisfy staff concerns, protect us against future liability and could be the beginning of, uh, some community safety surveillance to help the police.
Sorry, councillor Chesky.
Thank you very much worship, I, uh, I certainly support the notion of this, I, uh, I, I get what we're going for here and I think, um, it might be a good idea, I just think uh, there should be some language put in around, um, responsive review of the video and not, um, not monitoring, um, so those people don't think we've hired a, a staff member to sit and watch the camera and call in every time we see somebody who looks suspicious or um, I've seen in another world where something was damaged, uh, in a cafeteria area, so they added a camera and then break times get rolled into that, so uh, it's just important to me that if we have this, we're laser focused on what we're trying to achieve with the camera and that we're not, and especially for public perception, that we're not putting up a camera to monitor the streets so that we can call the police anytime we see someone that looks suspect. Uh, I, I support, um, keeping an eye on the Rainbow Crosswalk, uh, with the history we've seen in other municipalities. Uh, I, I can't say it's inevitable, but I think it's important, uh, that we do, uh, get ahead of that, so, uh, I support the motion as long as it is reactionary, um, thirty days is great and, um, we're not constantly monitoring this, obviously, thank you.
Thank you councillor, uh, I have deputy mayor Ross and then councillor Downer.
Sorry, thank you through you, your worship, um, I am, uh, a little concerned with regards to this, I, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know what, uh, how the conversation went, I did see, read the minutes, but, uh, I, I'm just concerned we're sort of putting the cart before the horse, I didn't realize there was a problem and, uh, we want to implement something that we may perceive as a problem, time, effort, and money, uh, I, it doesn't sit comfortable with me, but, uh, that's just my point, I don't, I didn't realize there was a problem at this point, we converted to a four-way stop and, uh, we want, we want to have a camera to make sure people are stopped, I'm just a little, what we're trying to achieve, I, I apologize, but I completely do not understand.
Thank you deputy mayor, um. Uh, councillor Downer will come back to you councillor Gordon.
Thank you, thank you, your worship, I have trouble, I would have trouble supporting this. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's going a little bit too far and I would be very interested to hear what our, uh, our lawyer had to say about it, if she had any, uh, any, uh, suspicions or, or doubts about it, I'd like to have a legal opinion on it before anything goes for, for Donna.
Thank you councillor Downer, uh, councillor Gordon.
Thanks, just to help fill in the blanks here, deputy mayor Ross, and you should watch that YouTube video, um, it was really quite an interesting, good debate, I think. Though, uh, you won't get it from the minutes. Anyway, the long story short is the concern, the camera would be capturing and recording to the cloud or however we decide to store it for some period of time, only to review if there was a problem, would help us then judge the wisdom of our decision to basically dissent uh, from staff recommendations and see whether installation of these four-way stops and causing the vehicles to come to a stop actually causes some of the chaos or concerns that we were cautioned about. So it's basically collecting some evidence to help us either justify our decision or perhaps revisit it and say that it's unjustified. And we can't do that with a radar sign, you need a camera, Mr Campbell provided some lovely evidence in high definition, caught through a quite an inexpensive camera, and I'm simply suggesting we don't rely on crowdsourcing and citizens to help us, um, guide public policy, that we have a bit of skin in the game and drop a couple of cheap cameras in and capture some of this evidence ourselves that we can use to review our decision. The, the fact that it happens to also angle left and let's do a nice tight shot on the new crosswalk to me is just an added bonus, um, let's hope that it never, the footage never needs to be used, but for the relatively inexpensive cost, if you're gonna put one camera and put two, it's the same internet connection, same cloud storage and it's there, uh, should the police need it to investigate or our, Mr Campbell and his team want to use it to count cars or look at near misses or, uh, see the fact that everyone's using or the, the, you know, the crossing, it's orderly, whatnot, or heaven forbid, there is some type of accident, someone's injured, it collects beautiful evidence for that. So, and just to councillor Downer's point, I, I would welcome, uh, legal input, but I'll just remind him and I'm sure he knows from his years on council and on the police boards, et cetera, there's no expectation of privacy in a public place. You're on hundreds of cameras anytime you go anywhere and, uh, the fact that a municipality puts up a camera is, you know, we're certainly not new to that. And taking pictures or video of people at intersections, uh, is not an invasion of anyone's privacy and I look forward to a legal opinion. Um, just to validate the fact that there is no expectation of privacy in any public place.
Thank you councillor, uh, councillor Cunningham, please.
Yeah, before I start, I blinked and I missed it, how much video does it save? Does it store how many hours?
It would really depend on the technology we decided to go with, if we went with the equivalent of a Nest camera, you know, some, you go buy at Staples. Uh, it depends on the Google plan you pay for, but for about sixty bucks per camera, it'll store it for thirty days. And then it starts to overwrite and it goes into the cloud, so there's no hardware other than the camera. The pole that it gets clamped onto needs a bit of power, because it runs over what's called power or ethernet. And it needs internet, so either we plug that into Mr Campbell and, you know, give him fifty bucks a year or something, whatever he needs for his internet, or we take advantage of the network we already have running between all our municipal buildings. Uh, like for the IP phone system, it uses internet and there used to be antennas, I don't know if the tech's changed since I've been involved. But we have that capability and it's direct line of sight to the fire hall and the fire hall is definitely connected to the municipality's land, so. I'm just coming up with some ideas, the IT folks, that's what they do, um, they can make this happen and I'm sure the spend could be capped at a grand.
All right, thank you, uh, I, I see the idea of doing downtown surveillance is a valuable thing, it just feels a little bit piecemeal. Just starting with one building and one spot, um. I like that it would be, you know, responsive, much like our bylaw system, complaint-driven, that we could find it. I still feel like the four-way stop was not the best option, I actually think that piece of street should just be closed, that little piece of First Street between Bay and Bayshore and add some more parking downtown, but, um, we know the stats from four-way stops all over the province, I'm not I'm not sure what the value, I don't think we're going to be reviewing for that, right, we're not going to be getting the data, so if this is a complaint-driven, if somebody was injured, we can review the film, but otherwise, we're not paying somebody to review the data to say how many people ran the stops and how many near misses were there, uh, because people have not been complaining, there have not been accidents, so um, I'm not sure it would give you the data that you're hoping to get to say, was it a good idea, it wasn't a good idea, unfortunately, it's more going to be yeah, pedestrian was sure, everybody had to stop, so they walked and they got hit. And now we've got the three stories and we go look at the camera, but I'm hoping that never happens. So I'm not sure if we could maybe, I'd like to know where we're at on our downtown camera surveillance program and how staff would feel this would fit. From that standpoint of really, it sounds like more of a, a liability piece. But also watching the, the Rainbow Crosswalk to see if somebody does deface it, being able to say, okay, who? Um, do we have any staff, um, interaction normally councillor Gordon, you've got, you've talked with staff in advance to get their feel for things?
No, this one I winged it, you know, the CAO is just chomping at the bit there, so. I'll let him go and, and this is, by the way, if this dies tonight, this could be part of something bigger we do at some point, I just bring it forward that it is timely, because of the concerns that were raised about us uh, and cautions that were raised that we don't do, we voted to do last meeting, that this might be a great opportunity, we're gonna put that crosswalk in anyway. We're gonna put a camera to look at the crosswalk, which I could have just made this about, may as well have another one that just pulls back and looks at the intersection, same post, so. I, I'm content either way, I just think that, uh, public facing cameras for crime abatement is, uh, you know, long overdue in our municipality and rather than a big bang, blowing tons of money and putting a whole network in on the King Street, we could start with one intersection and let it grow and see how it goes.
Thank you councillor, uh, Mr CAO, and then I'd like to hear Mr Campbell's opinion about whether this, any of this mitigates the liability of not following the provincial guidelines.
Thank you, uh, your worship, and to, to address councillor, um, Cunningham's for, uh, request about an update from staff on the, uh, surveillance, uh, of downtown, there is, um, we've been talking certainly since I've been here and I think it predates. Um, you know, over a year and a half, we've been talking about doing, doing something and trying to find a way to have a system that made sense for the downtown area, so we do have an application with the county. Um, which was supported by the BIA and the, um, the, uh, police board to, um, implement a SCRAM system, so this would allow, you know, businesses to participate. Um, get some subsidization for video cameras that they could install and join a network that would be, you know, uh, be able to be used by the, uh, the police if there was a need to, to pull on some data that was being stored on those cameras. It would also allow for the municipality to use some of that funding to install our own cameras at, uh, specific locations downtown around the harbor or, or other areas that we would, uh, we would like to do, so. That is, um, in play, so we're hoping, you know, we'll get support from that from the county, but we have not heard at this point. I think we will here relatively soon, but, um, it is in process.
Thank you, Mr Dino, uh, just on that point about the, uh, the SCRAM application. Uh, it passed the, um, it's an application to the Economic Development Subcommittee, county, um, it passed, it was recommended by the committee to be accepted and funded in, at the next council meeting, county, it's my expectation or belief, I should say, rather, expectation is my belief that that this will go through, at that point, then that starts a conversation about councillor Gordon and councillor Downer was talking about privacy issues and an expectation of privacy in the public realm and what that means. Uh, I know that, speaking with inspector Evans, there are concerns about where these things are allowed to point, because you, when you cross, there's the potential to cross the threshold from the public domain into private domain and then you're in trouble. Um, so there is a, a legal maybe technical legal, quasi-legal, uh, thing that needs to be dealt with. Um, but I'd like to hear from Mr Campbell, if he would, or can, uh, comment on whether this mitigates any, any, the fact that we are not following the provincial, provincial guidelines with respect to four-way stops.
Uh, your, your worship, uh, I, I think the, the courts would, would make a determination, certainly a camera would collect.
Uh, your, your worship, uh, like, I think the, the courts would, would make a determination. Certainly a camera would collect data. Uh, but data doesn't mitigate liability. It would just, you know, give the parties. Uh, because if an accident occurred and we have evidence that you know, somebody, you know, made an error in driving, um, you know, they'll still argue that uh, you know, th- the signage was wrong, the intersection was wrong. Uh, that has nothing to do with the fact that they didn't have the driver's license, they didn't have insurance and that they didn't follow the rules. So a camera would collect data, uh, but I don't believe it would mitigate liability.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Um, I think it's fair to say that um, we will, we will be funded under the SCRAM program. The program is really designed to deal with properties that are you know, business properties or, or residential, any place where you can um, we're not imp- impinging on people's privacy, so shooting across the road inadvertently into somebody's living room of seeing what channels they're watching or whatever. Um, the, so the SCRAM program is likely going to come into play. I think there are some stud, uh, I speak to, I'm sorry, to uh, Inspector Evans, he's very clear about when, where and how you can direct these cameras. Um, he does have some um, suggestions around placement with respect to uh, some of the safety and security of some of our parking areas in, in parking lots in the downtown. There is, um, so there's, the program is basically one of education and recruitment also to provide monies to businesses to, to put cameras in, in consultation or in conjunction with what's known as environmental design for prevention of crime. So lights, you know, uh, security gates, uh, no place to put sharps, uh, that sort of thing. Um, so I, I personally, I, I, I can't see, this is why I asked Mr. Campbell, I can't see how this would mitigate the liability that's going to accrue to us um, by ignoring the provincial mandate, but that's flogging a horse that's already left the barn. Um, I, I think it would be in our best interest to roll this into the broader program or as Counselor Cunningham said. And um, and look at the best use of, of resources. And if Mr. Campbell chooses to put his cameras in a way that deals with that, that's up to him. Um, so uh, I know that the B, as you know, said, the BIA is behind this and Mr. Campbell, I know is behind this. So I, I personally don't think, I think we're premature. And uh, I, I, I would like to understand the liability of where these cameras are going, pointed and so on. Really has been through this and I would get ahold of uh, this or police service board and really had to get their opinion because they, they did have cameras in the community and what for the things that happened to the cameras was to put buildings up, the areas they were supposed to be looking at for obscured. Then they had tactical issues with their cameras and it just was a litany of, hence they went to SCRAM. So I, I would just suggest, you know, that we wait and see uh, how this unfolds through the SCRAM program, engaging the BIA. Uh, for, you know, completely and engaging the broader community and hopefully enrolling them in being able to deal with uh, providing tools to the police to resolve investigations quickly and effectively. So, uh, but as to the question of whether or not we will receive the funds, if I were a betting man, I'd put money on it. So. Um, any other comments on this, uh, Counselor Post? Please.
I just have a comment. Um, if we don't know when we're going to be receiving the funds to um, you know, spread it around, make it happen in other places. I think even just the fact that we're putting in the, the sidewalk, the painting, it might be a good idea to start there. And I think whoever installs them would be checking with the police and anybody they had to, to make sure they were aimed properly because if they're not, they're not going to do the job we would hope they would do. Um, I do support this. I just wonder if that's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, as far as the uh, the funding approval, it will be um, the fourteenth. So the approval of the funds is expected to happen on the fourteenth. And once that happens, then uh, we'll receive authorization pretty quickly thereafter because there is a time limit on this. So. Not ours, counties.
The fourteenth of September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Gordon.
Very well. I mean, the, the fact that it uh, it doesn't really help us or it's not going to provide any benefit to the town to do the video for the intersection. I'd be content then if even just the takeaway from this conversation, I'm, but this can die tonight. Um, takeaway from the conversation is that assuming there's consensus that we do try and make it so there's a priority on getting some type of surveillance on our new crosswalk. It would be a shame to talk about this, put the crosswalk in, plan for a camera two months later and it gets vandalized after fourteen days. You know what I mean? We missed the boat. Uh, for the cost of a camera and how easy the infrastructure is to put in, it'd be nice if maybe we made a priority out of uh, when the SCRAM funding is uh, in our bank account, which is awesome, your worship. I'm glad this is moving forward so quickly. That maybe that become one of the first things we put in is our rainbow crosswalk camera. And I don't need a motion for that. I'm just looking, if there's consensus, then you know, staff hears that and I'm content.
Mr., well, okay, uh, council, how do you feel about that? See, yes, from Counselor Ocheski, yes, from Counselor Post, yes, from Counselor Cunningham. So legal considerations uh, being taken into account, uh, it seemed to be that I would get some inspiration upfront in what this program is being rolled out. So and then hopefully that'll happen fairly quick.
Fair enough. We can vote this down and get this meeting to a close before we hit the witching hour.
I was just thinking about that motion actually. Thank you. So council, you've heard the, uh, you've heard the motion. Um, all those in favor? No, 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 it's the green ones in favor. Did, did, I'm going to ask who's against now. It's the red ones.
Well, I'm content, I'm content that we're, this is moving forward in another way. So I, I'm fine with this thing going down.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, council. I think it was a good discussion. Um, so next of a motion to uh, moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Counselor Cunningham. The bylaw twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three being a bylaw to establish regulations within municipal parkland, municipal old lands used for recreational purposes within the town of Midland. And to repeal bylaws ninety-eight dash fifty-six, ninety-five dash seventy-eight as amended. Bylaw ninety-seven dash three-six, he passed and enacted. Um, all those in favor? Thank you. That so passes. I have a motion moved by Counselor Prost, seconded by Counselor Maine. That bylaw twenty twenty-one dash four zero being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting held September first, twenty twenty-one. Be passed and enacted. All those against? Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. I should have saved that for this one.
Now they're doing Simon Says.
Yeah. Uh, moved by Counselor Ocheski, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that this regular meeting of council adjourned at twenty-two, sorry, eleven forty-five PM. All in, all in favor?
Ten forty-five.
I beg your pardon, ten forty-five. Thank you.
Depends what time zone you're watching in.
That's right. And that carries. Thank you. Thank you, council. Um, this was a little longer than I thought, but uh, great conversation and uh, enjoy your weekend.